I'd like to call this meeting to order, January 8th, Tuesday, going to the school board. We do not have a flag, so move on. First item on the agenda is, welcome, we did, second item on the agenda, items to remove from the consent agenda. Does anyone have any items they would like to remove from the consent agenda?
Yes, remove the D E and I minutes from December 18th.
So the request is remove the D E and I minutes from the agenda. Which date?
December 18th.
December 18th, thank you.
So that become a new agenda item?
Does she want to, or just pull it?
Do you want?
You want to pull them.
So the dates incorrect, the start times are incorrect.
Do you want to deliberate on them, or do you want to pull it for a future meeting?
Pull it for a future meeting.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to remove item six.
I think we're just going to hold on that. We're doing the consent agenda, point of order, sorry, Chair.
All right, so with that.
Senate's on November 13th.
Minutes from November 13th, board minutes.
Are you pulling that for correction in a future meeting?
That's right. Thank you, Commissioner Curry. All right. Anyone else? All right, so the consent agenda, we will remove D E and I, December 18th, and the November 13th board minutes. With that, I'd like someone to make a motion to amend the agenda in the following. Would like someone to give me a motion?
I so move.
Second, Commissioner Gorman, any discussion?
Are we, because we need to amend the agenda, are we not there yet?
We're not going to amend, this is the consent agenda first.
Oh, okay, we don't even need a motion then, you just pull it, that's it.
Great. And next is, like to approve the agenda as stated for the board, Commissioner, I mean, student. All right, you'd like to remove the student commissioner's report from the agenda. You know, at this point, I'm going to remove the chair's report in spite of the time due to the lateness. Great. All right, will someone give me a motion?
Oh, sorry, I'd like to move to add a new agenda item, number 11, Board Deliberations on FY '20 Budget. 11A would be Presentation on a Consolidated Budget Proposal, and 11B will be Commissioner Questions and Statements.
It's on there.
I'm going to do that first.
And so we have this.
Oh, and you want me to do it all?
We have Board Deliberation A and B.
Oh, that's already on there?
Yeah, so we did it.
Okay.
All right, so then, but we do need to add executive session. Commissioner Curry?
I believe we need to add resuming the executive session if we have time.
Yes.
So would that be 13?
So we'll add item 12. So we're going to add item 12, Executive Session.
New item 12, Executive Session, for the board to deliberate on a personnel matter pursuant to the appropriate statute. And a second, and a second item in the executive session to deliberate on something that, if there was public knowledge, would.
Say again?
Yeah.
Regarding negotiations, the premature disclosure of which would prejudice the district.
Great. All right, so we're adding that to our, all right then, may I ask someone to make a motion to amend the agenda in the following manner?
I so move.
All right, is there a second? Okay, all those in favor of adopting the agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention, the motion carries, thank you. No, we're changing the agenda, next, all right. We'll move to approving the consent agenda. All right, public comment is next, I don't have to.
So, there are no sign, we did not do, oh, there it is. Why don't you?
You've got to move to the right because the light's going to hit you. Yeah, right there, it's good, stay in the corner there, it's fine, I think, that's the best you're going to get.
Great.
So first is Lily and Dean, you all speaking together?
Um.
Lily and Tanya, Mary, Amanda, Heidi, Alex.
So.
Coral reading?
So, hi, everybody, my name is Lily and Dean, and I am a speech and language pathologist in early education, and we are also known as SLPs, and thank you for hearing us tonight. Thank you so much for serving as our school board. We are well aware that you all volunteer your time, and that you're driven by a passionate desire for student achievement, just like we are. I'm here with some of my SLP colleagues from the district, and I'm going to give you a quick profile of our educational and professional credentials, and then my colleagues will give you more specifics as to our roles and responsibilities in the Burlington School SLPs are often called speech teachers, and vaguely understood to work on sounds like R or S, but we are so much more than that. We are highly qualified clinical professionals that begin our jobs with a 56-unit master's degree, a post-degree fellowship year, a nationally competitive comprehensive exam, and a certificate of clinical competence from the American Speech Language Hearing Association. The certificate of clinical competence allows us to provide services nationally and internationally in our field. And since this is Vermont, we also hold dual licenses from the Agency of Education and the Office of Professional Regulation. All of our credentials require annual ongoing education in evidence-based practices. The reason that there is such a huge shortage of SLPs nationally and internationally is because the requirements to achieve and maintain professional certification is so challenging, expensive, and time-consuming. In total, in our district, we have 15 SLPs and four SLPAs. SLPAs are speech-language pathology assistants, and they are vital partners in our work. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Tanya Kopeck, I am one of the district SLPs who works with the students in the upper grades, and I'm here to clarify sort of why we're in schools, and to speak briefly to our role as pathologists, the P in SLP. So, most, if not all of you, are familiar with the federal education, the Federal Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, IDEA, and under IDEA, schools are required to provide speech and language services for all school age children with communication disorders when that disorder adversely affects their educational performance. As licensed SLPs, we are responsible for both diagnosing and treating communication and swallowing disorders, as well as identifying students at risk in order to prevent communication disorders, and this is especially true with our youngest students. In our role as pathologists or diagnosticians, we administer standardized tests, we review medical information, we interview families and teachers, and we differentiate between language acquisition, language differences, and language disorders. We also make referrals to otolaryngologists, ENTs, audiologists, feeding and swallowing specialists, neurologists, and autism specialists. We conduct trials for selecting augmentative and alternative communication for our non-verbal or minimally verbal students, and we are involved in completing the Medicaid applications to obtain these devices. Within schools, we work really closely on teams with general ed teachers, with special educators, physical therapists, occupational therapists, and other support staff. We also, in our role, communicate really closely with audiologists, hearing consultants, visual specialists, vision specialists, behavioral interventionists, doctors, multilingual liaisons, and social workers. We are part of this big multi-tiered system of supports that helps students successfully communicate within academic classroom and social settings. And of course, all this comes with a ton of paperwork, and occasionally a little chocolate.
Woo, that's a start. Hi, I'm Terry Connor, I'm the SLP at Sustainability Academy, and just to follow up with what Tanya was talking about, I just wanted to build on the large scope of our practice in the schools, starting with the difference between speech and language, although they're both neurologically based, speech is more like the motor component of speech, and language is more cognitively based disorders. So, a broad overview of the delays and disorders that we diagnose, treat, and serve are speech and articulation, language, which is the delayed or disordered ability to either understand or use language, that could be from pre-linguistic communication and beyond, also for language that's been affected by traumatic brain injury, or pre-existing neurological condition. And then there's also social and pragmatic language, which is a big part of what we do, I think, across the board, starting with the little ones that just join attention, all the way up to middle school and high school, figuring out sarcasm and idioms, and how to navigate socially in the school system. Voice and resonance disorders, fluency, stuttering, or cluttering in speech, and dysphagia, and swallowing, and feeding disorders. So that's just a broad overview of some of the things that we focus on, and I'm going to hand it over to Amanda, and she'll let you know what we sort of don't do as well. Thanks, guys.
Hi, I'm Amanda, I'm an SLP at the Integrated Arts Academy, and I'm just here to cover what we don't do as speech therapists. So one big thing is we do not treat language difference, so that means children who speak multiple languages, and also even different dialects in American English. However, we do help with assessing to make sure that if a child who does speak multiple languages does need speech support, we can differentiate those two. We also do not provide social and emotional, social, emotional, and behavioral services for children if it's rooted in more trauma, or more psychologically-based diagnoses. And we also do not teach general education such as reading, English, or writing. And I would just like to say, we work as speech-language pathologists in the Burlington School District because we love the children that we work with, and we believe that the ability to communicate is a human birthright. And I'm going to introduce Heidi Corbeau, who is an SLP at Lynn.
Thanks. So, the best part of what we do is working with the students and families, and so I just wanted to share a brief story from a student in preschool. A year ago, and this is from his parents. "A year ago, my son was painfully aware of how difficult it was for most people to understand his words, and so he said as little as possible, with peers, teachers, and particularly in large groups. This affected his ability to bond with peers, stifled his capacity to learn, and was a detriment to his self-esteem. Now, just over a year and a half after beginning services, he is confidently speaking with everyone, from the cashier at the store, to his teachers, to extended family and friends, and especially at home. I hear that he is often the first to raise his hand in preschool, where he now speaks up assuredly with questions and ideas. I feel like his teachers and school friends are finally able to see him for the intelligent, compassionate, and creative person he is. This has done wonders for his self-confidence, and now that he can fluently communicate, it's opened up his ability to grow emotionally and intellectually along with his peers. He's overall more positive and collaborative, and his ability to speak clearly and be understood has so much to do with that. Next year, he's headed to kindergarten, where I know, thanks to the advancements he'll have made with his speech and language pathologists the previous two years, he'll be able to confidently and positively participate in the classroom and the greater school community." So that's just one story, but we have many like that, that we'd be happy to share.
Hello, 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 board members. Hi, my name is Alexandra DeZento, and is a resident of Burlington and a speech-language pathologist in our early education program. I greatly appreciate that you're taking the time to hear about what we do for Burlington's youngest learners. I don't have this written down, but I feel like I'm on Shark Tank. Please, Lauren Grenier. Okay. Speech-language pathology is a field people don't typically know about until you or elect what needs our services. This may look like a child who isn't speaking, an individual who has suffered a stroke and isn't communicating the way they used to, or supporting an individual with dementia in a skilled nursing facility. I'm here on behalf of the students on my caseload, like the four-year-old boy with autism spectrum disorder who is working on perspective-taking, the three-year-old girl who was kicked out of her daycare for biting because she didn't have the language to protest, the academically advanced three-year-old boy who is nonverbal and learning to communicate through an augmentative and alternative communication device, and a four-year-old girl who can't be understood by her family because of a severe phonological delay, just to name a few. In preschool, we provide speech-language services to children ages three to five years old. We have five full-time SLPs and one part-time SLP in the early ed program to support our eight classrooms. We provide services to children with an IEP and at 33 child carers for these children, which include Burlington Tech Center, King Street Center, and Heartworks, just to name a few. Studies suggest the achievement gap already exists by the time children enter kindergarten. Providing high-quality preschool education and intervening early for children with developmental delays leads to greater academic success throughout their early years in elementary school. After all, 90% of a child's brain is developed by the age of five. Here's a snapshot of what being a speech-language pathologist in a preschool looks like. No wardrobe is complete without paint, tears, snot, or all of the above. We are often the first professionals families come into contact with in the school district because communication delays are often the first observable sign of a problem. Explaining to a family that their child has a disability is the hardest part of our job, but explaining that Burlington Early Ed will provide exactly what the child needs makes it easier. Communication delays don't discriminate against race, place of origin, or socioeconomic status. We support students and families of all walks of life on our caseload. For every dollar spent in preschool, we save $8 in future costs, and you can turn anything into a song, and should turn everything into a song, regardless of how off-key you are. Thank you so much for taking an interest in our field, and most importantly, the children we serve, and thank you for your service. And that was the last of our presentations.
What's your evaluation?
Is there anyone else who would like to speak at public comment that has not signed up? Okay, thank you very much for your presentation. Then we, at this time, will close public comment. Board reflection, next. Do any board members wish to reflect at this time? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to committee reports. We'll start with policy governance. Commissioner Wick.
Yeah, I will waive any report here, we've got an item coming up a little later, thank you.
Next on the agenda is Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee Report.
We had a lively discussion at our last meeting, talk a little bit about ESA, and what this district is doing for ESA, Every Student Succeeds Act. And we have another meeting scheduled for a week from today, and we are looking at moving our meetings to Monday evenings, starting in February.
Commissioner Curry? Next would be Finance and Facilities.
Finance and Facilities last met on December 13th, and we have a meeting in Kenil possibly at 6 o'clock on Thursday. I think the minutes are pretty complete, I don't think I need to go on to save time.
Great, thanks. Next would be Community Engagement Committee.
So, we didn't have a community engagement meeting in, correct, in December? But I have been working with Kathy Awel with the Early Ed Task Force, and we are, we're making headway, I believe, we're going to be meeting on Thursday evening, and it looks like we might be kind of splitting up into two groups, one that wants to do a broader community, multi-year and community engagement effort, and then another group that's really looking specifically at space in Burlington. So, that's where we're headed, and I will keep you posted after Thursday night's meeting as to some other advancements that we might be making.
Thank you. Next would be the Personnel and Curriculum Committee.
So, we had a meeting on December 10th about the Reading Plus program in the district. We learned a lot about this fascinating program that kids have access to, and that we do have access in different schools around the district. There are 100 seats available at BHS that are not full, but we're hoping that those will be filled this year. It's basically a, I don't want to say remedial, but it's a, it's a program that allows students to progress at their own rate independently on developing their reading skills in comprehension and reading rate. And it was very, very interesting. We had a presentation by Greg Fowler and his cohort Alex, I don't have her last name. Again, that was on December 10th. Last night, many of you were present at a, at a curriculum personnel meeting regarding coaching in the district, and the minutes are just fresh off the press, but I won't go through into that yet tonight, we'll save that for next time.
Thank you. Next on the agenda would be the Superintendent's Monitoring Reports.
Thank you. We did actually go through this last board meeting, and we had one of the documents were misplaced, so we've kind of reintroduced it, and I'll turn it over to Director Lavery to, well, we don't have to debate it again, but we hope the board will receive this document in replacement of the previous document.
Well, about, can I ask? Yeah. Commissioner.
I have a question for Stephen, actually, if that's okay, may I ask that?
So back to committee report?
Yeah, sorry, you guys moved so quickly, sorry about that. When will we have time to talk about the presentation last night on the coaching model? Because that seems relevant to some of the work we're going to be doing tonight. And you said we'll do it at a later date.
Well, I'll tell you, I have access to the minutes right now, if you want me to send them to the board members, I'm not sure that's appropriate or not. I could, I can send you a Word document of the minutes from last night's meeting, if you'd like that available, and it is very interesting.
But that hasn't been approved by anybody?
No, it's just a draft right now, but it's a fairly polished, multi-page draft with a lot of information in it that you might find relevant regarding tonight's discussion.
I think we have, after this meeting, you know, we'll be, we have penciled in a date next week as well for budget, so tonight would not be the final.
Okay, thank you.
So shall I?
If necessary, at this time.
Okay.
But thank you, Commissioner Golick. Sorry, turn it up, go back to Superintendent O'Bang.
The only thing I just want to flag for folks on this, I mentioned it at the last meeting, is that just timing-wise, ideally, I think we would be doing this report having the benefit of our audit, and being able to use our most recent audit, so we don't, that means we can always review, you know, the timing of this report in the future, but with respect to the FY '18 audit, we're in the final phases there, and so, just so folks kind of know where that stands, we are in conversations with our auditor about potentially scheduling a visit in kind of early to mid-February, he's not available on the regular board meeting date in February, I think that's the 12th, so we're looking at potentially an alternative time. So, again, we could push it till March, but the thinking was, let's get in here before it becomes too stale. So then you'll actually hear from the auditor about the audit.
Just put to the board to receive this monitoring report.
Okay. Commissioner Fisher?
Just something that popped out at me, at some point, you mentioned that around invoicing in the summer is challenging. So, and I think this more for Superintendent O'Bang, the administrative contracts for principals is structured in the same timeframe as with teachers, so that there is a summer break for principals?
No, their contracts are different than teachers. They have, they work more days in the summer, and the teachers were, you know, in the June and they're off in the summer, but they're mandated, I think it's, contract talks about 10 additional days after work in the summer, and they do have meetings and retreats with me throughout the summer, so it's a little different contract than the teacher's contract.
Right. And that issue's not just related to principals, it's also the administrative assistants, like at the elementary level, for example, that don't work all summer, they tend to be the people who receive some of the invoices, and that sort of thing, and whose, on whose desks they remain until the fall, when they, they come back.
Great. So I put forth to the board that, can someone give you a motion to approve Monitoring Report 2.3 from the superintendent? Do I have a motion to approve that he is?
Motion to accept the monitoring report.
Second, Commissioner Gorman? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Aye.
The motion carries, one abstention. Next on the agenda is the policy update. Commissioner Wick, the first reading.
Oh, thanks, Chair, well, so, I hope you have before you, or can locate on your computers, a draft policy. Tonight is just a first reading, a few minutes of discussion, and then the committee will take under advisement anybody's comments. It's up there. So essentially, what you see up there is our existing policy 2.4, Planning and Budgeting. So I'll just highlight the three sections that are proposed to change, and that would be the ones that are underlined, four, five, and six. And essentially, essentially what this says, and it's in the language of policy governance, which is stated in the negative, so it says the superintendent shall not, number four, fail to inform the board and the public through the school district's annual report of the impact of the proposed budget on district programs and staff employment. Number five, shall not fail to provide the public in the annual report with a comparative line item budget of revenues and expenditures over several years. And then, number six, shall not fail to inform the public in the annual report of the achievement of our students on those state-mandated academic tests. And then what I'd like to do, the sponsor, unless he chooses to decline, which is fine, don't mean to put anyone on the spot, but I wonder if Commissioner Pillsbury might want to speak to this briefly as the initial sponsor of this one?
Hey, I have many copies of the annual reports, it's back in the 90s, and the latest one that I received was last year, I usually get a hard copy, and it's 14 pages, and as I said in my first board meeting in April, that I didn't really get a lot of information in this annual report about the budget, which started me to think about, well, if I'm supposed to make a data-informed decision about voting on the budget, shouldn't I have more information as a taxpayer, and somebody who's engaged and really supportive of the Burlington School System? So I went back to see what I, what I received in February 2014, I received, this is a 14-page document, this is a 50-page document, and in it, it had, number one, it had the, a line item budget for revenues and expenditures from FY '10 to FY '15, so it had significant amount of information for me to talk, if I really was interested in looking at the budget. But another thing that it had was it had, for each one of the schools, it told me how they were doing on various assessments, so I could talk, I could really understand the need that we might have in our district for various programs because of the deficiencies, the lack of proficiency of our students. So, it gives me a lot of information, which I did not find in this information about the achievement of our students, which is really why I'm investing in our Burlington School System. And the third thing that I did not find was actually very detailed information about, about what it is I was voting, what the budget was actually all about. And here I have, invest in Burlington, it kind of details what the budget is, the things that we're losing, and the things that we're gaining in, and it seemed to me that to get an engaged, supportive pub, public, and supportive of our public schools, they really, those who are interested will take hold of this and look at it, or look online, and this, I think, gives people, I think, a much more engagement, or support, and understanding of their school district than maybe we would get from a very short report. And that's, that's all, what this is all about, is really engaging the public, get them excited, come to our meetings. It's really engaging the public, get them excited, come to our meetings. You know, we've, you know, we've had in the past over 100 or more people engage and listening to the debate about the budget, as well as participating and talking about things that they think are important. And I think that's a way, any kind of deliberative body, a representative body operates, is really giving, being transparent in the information. And that's all, that's all of this is to get at, is to work on transparency in the information, so that we, we involve our citizenry in the public schools, because they actually belong to the public, to the public. And therefore, this is how to inform the public.
Thank you, Commissioner Pillsbury. Are there any other thoughts, comments, or questions as we just chew through this first reading? Commissioner Barlow?
Yes, and number five, fail to provide the public in the district's annual report a comparative line item budget of revenues and expenditures for several years. Isn't there a standard format, it's like with the proposed budget and like the past trail, two trailing years? Is that correct? Is that the normal format? Nathan, maybe?
That's a format we've used, we, I think, I mean, I don't know that there is an industry standard, but that is the format that we've used. I think the difference is, we, because we were providing significantly more budget information that's been, than has been part of the old annual reports, we created a standalone document, so that, the budget document alone's about 80 pages now, and we removed it from the annual report for two reasons. Number one being the timing of it, the timing of when we have to produce the annual report makes it a challenge to provide as much budget information as we want, and that's why the annual report just has that brief overview. It references where to get the audit and other, other information, but it's not contained in the annual report. And the other reason is that there is a, well, I should make note that the annual report has certain things that have to be in it, and things we have to get out there, but the other reason is because we no longer produce as many of the annual reports in paper copies, like we've tried to control the costs, and now it's, it's mostly an electronic thing, but when we do, we didn't want to start producing 100-page documents, so it was just like a, a measure to contain costs since we were producing a lot of these documents, but relatively few people are accessing them in, in a hard copy format.
If I'll, so, so I would suggest, I'd offer that perhaps we should be specific about the number of years we'd want to add, and I'll suggest two or three. And then another comment, because one of the things that I did also before, when I came to the board, is I was trying to understand what the differences were year to year, and it was really, it was really challenging, because of the way things were booked in the budget, things would move GL categories year to year. So, I was wondering if Nathan could speak to, to that. I mean, the value of comparatives, and maybe going forward, how some changes legislatively that are requiring us to book things certain ways, will, will become more meaningful in the future than it might be right now?
Yep, I think there's, there's definitely value in being able to go back and, and kind of compare budgets and spending year over year. There's also complexity in doing that for a number of reasons. One of the things that, just as, by way of example, that I encountered when I started was that there was a lot of, there was a complicated accounting structure that school districts have to use to categorize the types of spending that they do, and one of the things I noticed was that there wasn't a lot of uniformity in how the district was characterizing some of their expenses. So for example, if you look at our comprehensive budget document, you'll see a lot of categories, and they'll say things like regular instruction, special education, speech and language, like there's all these different functional areas. One of the things that I noticed when I started was that a lot of expenditures were being classified just into kind of a general education function, even if that's really not what they were. And so, one of the challenges we've had as we've tried to clean that up, of course, is it makes it harder to compare to prior years, because we're continuing to kind of look at the expenditures with a more, look at them more carefully, ensure they're coded accurately, but that also means that, you know, we don't know the degree to which those problems existed in, in all sorts of prior years. The other thing that folks may have heard of and, and might want to be aware of is that the state is in the process, and we're, we're in the process of moving to a uniform chart of accounts. So the idea is that all school districts would operate under the same chart of accounts, and that that would increase the comparability of financial information across school districts in the state. So you'd be able to look at, and have more confidence that when you're comparing what Burlington spends on any given type of item, you'd know that, that by and large, you're looking at an apples-apples comparison with the rest of the, with the rest of the state. However, when you go through a transition like that, we're going to have a period, potentially in fiscal year 2020, that we're coming up, where we'll have old data and the old accounting structure, and then we'll have our new data and the new accounting structure, and I'm not, I'm not that confident that we'll be able to have a very reliable conversion of the historic data. So we might be entering a period where we'll kind of have to rely on data that looks, that's difficult to compare over a few years, until we've been on that new system for a while, and then we can have two or three years' worth of, of historic data. So I think it is valuable, but I think it's complicated for reasons that were both internal to the Burlington School District's operation, but also then complicated by changes at the state level that we and every other school district in Vermont is going to be faced with.
Okay, I, I have a quick question for Commissioner, Commissioner, Senior Director Lavery, regarding the annual report and the separate document, which we've titled for the last couple of years, the comprehensive budget document, and also the chart of accounts. Did you just say that the state of Vermont AOE, Agency of Education, is going to require a specific chart of accounts, beginning with FY '20?
Yeah, the, I believe right now in state law, July 1, 2019, which is the first day of our 2020 fiscal year, is when we're, all, all school districts are supposed to be using the chart of accounts. I think I have that right in my memory, and that's what we in Burlington are shooting for.
And has the state provided us with that template chart of accounts?
Yes. They, they first provided it to us probably back in June or so of last year, but it's continued to kind of change over time. So it hasn't been a smooth implementation process, and it's something that now we are, after kind of investing a lot of time and energy, making some move, then there's changes, and so now we're going back and will be in, in January, kind of redoing that conversion process. The state's come out with a few more tools to aid in that, but yeah, we will be, we will be beginning that process again in a few weeks.
Do you know when offhand is the printer's deadline for the annual report this year?
I, I don't know the deadline. We definitely won't be done the chart of accounts conversion work in time to do that.
Understood, just trying to.
It's almost completed.
Yeah, this is.
The annual report.
Yeah, no, but the, the print deadline's much earlier. We could check with that. So typically, what we essentially do is we hold the, we hold it as late as we can to get, the, the pieces that are the last to go into the annual report are the budget pieces. So we kind of hold it as long as we can to get whatever we can hopefully have, you know, based on when the board's taken action, and so we, we try to put some content in there on the budget, we try to get the ballot language in there, that sort of thing, but there's not enough time to assemble all the information that we've begun providing in that comprehensive budget document. At least there hasn't been, based on when we've ultimately decided on a budget the last few years.
Okay. What's the administration's reaction, if you want to react, and you don't have to, I'm not intending to put you on the spot at all, to the idea that we, we'd like to have, and I don't think they're in there now, according to Commissioner Pillsbury, the test scores? There, that's a good reaction, I like it, in the annual report, as they used to be, apparently, 10 years ago.
Yeah, I think, Nate kind of alluded to it, there's been some transition around what goes in the annual report and what doesn't go in. I know there is, I usually get a communication from the agency, there are certain requirements that actually go in the annual reports, and we've always, through our communications department, followed that in terms of anything extra or things that we decide to want to put into, into that. We do have some data that, school achievement data that you receive through a monitoring report, so if the board decides you want to put that in one of the documents at some point, that's something we can do. It's, you know, it's, but it, I'm sure, just as the, the budget document, which is, you know, almost 80 pages long, if we put it in the annual report, then we'd have, you know, 150-page annual report. But a few years ago, people sort of lobbied that they wanted to see a separate document all about budget, all about the, the budget, and so we created that document. And so if we're being asked to put it back in, I mean, it's up to the board, we, we can do that. So I have no problem with showing student achievement data in terms of, the, the challenge will be the timing, right, between, even right now, for the report, we want to do an achievement, we're still waiting for the AOE to deliver on the, the data collection, right, which we would have gotten probably like a month or two earlier, but they've still delayed, so we're waiting, we're waiting, we're waiting, and when we get that, then we'll be able to kind of bring that forward. So, timing for our reports and things might be off-kilter in terms of getting that kind of piece, but we have no problem sharing, putting that in some form of document, or, you know, illustrating that in some way.
Thank you. Any other commissioners have questions on this? Commissioner Curry?
And, so what I'm interested in, just to connect to the test scores, is that there's a, every child, every student succeeds act. They should be getting a series of, are we getting a series of reports out from the state?
Yeah, yeah, we do, yes, but then that's, that's what I was saying, we're, we're kind of waiting, because now the expectation is for, the feds want the data, and the, and the state is also collecting data from us, but we're waiting for them to give us the data back now, right? And they're trying to get consistent across the.
Yeah, so my question is really just about this, it's really very bureaucratic, it's that, you know, rather than producing a 100-page document, you know, 40,000 times, could we have a document that identifies all the web links, so that when reports come out, they are fresh and not using data from two or three years ago, that may or may not bear any relationship to the kind of strategic goals that may be articulated by the budget or something? Just, just thinking about how to, how to best present the best information to the public so that they are actually getting as current information as is available.
I, I like that idea, because what, one of the things I've found is people get turned away from pages and pages, but if you have headings of relevant topics, people will say, oh, I want to know about schools, I want to know about data, and if they can click a link and go to as much as they want, so we would certainly provide like a link to our budget document, and they can read all 90 pages if someone chooses to, some people may not choose to. We want to put some links around our schools in terms of their data, because I would encourage our schools to have their own sites with their current data, and people could go and see that as well, too, right? Not everyone has, has the same thing, but including that in the annual report, that's not a problem in terms of saying, hey, if you want to hear about this information, this is where you can go, and this is where you can get more detailed information around. We are moving away from the hard copies, we're trying to do electronic to do that, so we're going to continue to do that. We'll have some hard copies just to have available, but mostly we'll be sending people electronically in terms of doing that.
Okay, well, any other questions? Commissioner Fisher?
Yeah, I especially am supportive of number six, the, have the achievement data in, if it's by reference, that's fine, but I think that we should be transparent, right, to, to, to the community, and show them the data that we have. We have a data specialist who's going to, you know, drive more data. When I moved here, I went looking for this data, and so I would think that we should have that data available to people who are looking to come here, and having one document with all those links, that's, that's great, as long as it's consistent from year to year to year. There were prior times when we were looking for data, and it was, oh, that was in a presentation, you have to go to board docs, you have to search it, like that's just too hard. So I really like that idea of essentially, you know, if you want to do a table of contents or whatever, I'm very supportive of that, especially around the achieve, the, the achieve, the academic achievement.
Other commissioners raising their hands?
I was going to say, can we put it online in, under our main page, so that they just, it's easy for everybody to get to, so, but.
Other commissioners? Okay, so here's what I would ask. In the next few weeks, if any commissioners would like to comment or that sort of thing, please send me your thoughts and comments on this policy and this general idea, and I will, you know, aggregate them, and at, at an upcoming meeting, the committee will take it up again and see if there's any refining that's needed. I, I did want to, along these lines, I think it's pertinent, I don't know if everybody's aware of, the city of Burlington has something called BTV STAT, the Performance Dashboard of the City of Burlington. I, I can't help it, but I've got to say, I, I love it. It, it has that, so I wonder if we might be thinking about a BSD STAT kind of thing, along the lines of what Commissioner Fisher said, which is consistent over time, so there's comparability of the key statistics. I think that'd be wonderful.
Yeah, and, and thank you for that segue, actually, because we do have a new data coordinator, and one of their tasks is to first identify what's the accurate data that we have in the system, and to have one-stop shopping, because we do have that all over the place, and also, the, because of the AOE going through their transition, there's a number of data initiatives, so we're trying to synchronize that as well, too, so when they pull the data, it's consistent with everything they're saying. So people go to AOE, they see the same thing that we provide. Right now, you go to even other districts, it's kind of inconsistent. So, that is a project that we've hired somebody to kind of look into and look for it, and I would also say we do have staff that are represented on the BTV Stats Committee. So we are working with the city in terms of looking at the stats and how they, they present it as well.
Nice, well, thank you, I'm, I'm finished with my item here.
Thank you, Commissioner Wick. Next on the agenda would be item 10, the superintendent's report, FY '20 budget update.
Okay. Who do you want to do that one?
I don't know. You tell me. Are your seatbelts on?
Okay, so, um, that up there. Okay, so let me just quickly, we're going to get right to the, the meat of it. Just to give you a recap, we've met several times, and we've appreciated the board's efforts in sort of identifying the criterias around what we should be using to align with our mission and vision to, to decide on our budget goals, and it very much aligns with our systems leaders. The last couple of board meetings, the board has given us some good direction around narrowing down the focus around the scope of tax impact, the scope of growth, and also around the elements that they feel are important based on the information that we've received. So based on the feedback we had last, last time, and we, we started out with the, you can see the documents up here with the five-plus million dollars' worth of items under our three strategic goal areas, and we went through the exercises of identifying the priority areas, and so that helped us in sort of bringing forward the next iteration that we think satisfied most, not almost all, the needs around the priorities that the board sort of indicated were really important at this time. So, you want to scroll down? Let me scroll down, keep going, keep going, all the way, yeah. So we'll get started. We'll skip the first little bit, because you've seen that, you can keep going. We've also, in the document, kept the old, so you can do some comparison around where we started and what, what's left out. And we've been talking about that multi-year approach in terms of some of the things that might be left off this year, that we, we retain them for discussion for next year, and have a phased-in approach around some of those pieces. So with that, I'll let Senior Director Lavery start off with our new information as we move forward.
All right, so we made a little table of contents here of new information, because we wanted to keep the, all kind of the preceding information that we've presented available to folks who might be just kind of joining this conversation later in the process. But at this slide here, we just quickly summarize the new information that's in here. A few housekeeping items, and I will go into, over them a little more detail, but we revised our baseline growth up by about $200,000, and we reflected those changes in the tax calculations, which I'll get to. Tax calculations are also updated with the CLA figure, we actually, we received that figure from the city. And then we will go into a more detailed discussion of a scenario that using those current assumptions would produce a tax impact of an estimated 4% increase. It encompasses $192 million of, of new investments from the list that you've already seen, but some of the investments are postponed or curtailed. It also includes $500,000 of non-instructional reductions, so that's, again, kind of offsetting that $1.9 million increase. And we also go over the impact, so folks can be clear about how the surplus impacts the tax rates. So on the next slide, if you can, Bonnie, just, we won't spend a lot of time on this, but I've updated some of these charts, they'll, they'll look familiar if you remember them from last presentation, but it just reflects the. But it just reflects the increase in the baseline growth amount to 2.2 million dollars. And that's a function of a variety of things. Like, we just kept kind of hammering away and looking at those numbers. We found a few items, for example, where we had not fully budgeted essentially for a full year of employees, like with our starting point was someone who was hired mid-year. And so obviously, we need to go back and make sure that, resuming that they're going to be here, you know, those positions will be filled for the full year. So just kind of housekeeping items like that, we went through. But the result of that, I just wanted to kind of provide this scenario reflecting the revised baseline growth. So that shows the impact on the budget. And then on the next slide, once again, while we come back into the tax rates, this slide used to list the CLA. That's been removed because it's no longer something that we need to make an assumption about. Because on the next slide, we'll see that we actually have the common level of appraisal figure from the city. It's 77.65 percent. That's a decrease of about 2.3 percent. So anytime the CLA decreases, it puts upward pressure on our tax rate. Like, our tax rate will be higher than it otherwise would be if the CLA hadn't changed. However, if there's a silver lining to this story, it's the fact that when I presented some of the estimates in December, I was assuming that the CLA would decline about two and a half percentage points based on what has happened over the past three years. So again, the silver lining would be the decrease, which we expected to happen, was actually somewhat less than the recent trend. So that is, in some ways, good news. And we know that the city is looking at the citywide reappraisal so that in a few years, that number will shoot back up to close to 100 percent. But we're probably a few years away from that happening. Okay, so given the figures that we still have to make assumptions about and those that we know, I've calculated here the actual tax rate impact of various scenarios. Again, this is a slide that's similar to something you've seen before, and I won't linger on it. But if folks want to compare or start thinking about what the tax impact would be at certain other levels, this chart provides a useful tool to do that. Okay, so now we move into the really meaty part of the conversation here. And Yao's going to talk a little bit about this scenario, which again is envisioned to arrive at a four percent impact on the tax rate based on the information that we know today.
So this, so we went back after we did this analysis and we did the dotocracy and took your feedback and went to go back to try to figure out a strategy to try to honor some of those pieces, but at the same time, reach the threshold that the board had indicated around the four percent. So under inclusive teaching and learning, so we're looking at proposing investments around the 1.6 for the proficiency coach and PLP and advisory coordination. And then we have the additional staffing elective courses and offerings at BHS. We're putting that forward, next slide. And then, so under early learning priority, one of the things that we had a really robust conversation with our principals and said, okay, that's a big jump in terms of, I think it was twelve, sixteen? Sixteen kindergarten pairs? And how can we implement this over time? And we came up with the strategy of doing nine and how that would work with, would be sharing initially to start. So if it's a school has two kindergarten classes, we'd assign one. If we had three, we'd do two. So then, that way, the next year, we could look at... And the principals felt confident that that would be fair to share between two classes, one pair, to still honor that and have a gradual way of improving that area. Of course, we want to maintain the pre-K classrooms, so we remain that. We reduced the amount of professional development around the K-5 phonics, grammar, and reading curriculum. So we worked with our curriculum department to figure out, okay, what we could do with the 40,000? Could we still do professional development? And they felt that 40,000 would be able to be sufficient to continue that train. Under the social-emotional priority, the guidance counselor was a big emphasis, especially to target some of our EL students at the middle schools. So everyone supported continuing with that. And then, oh, slow down. And then the middle school health and sex ed teachers, that was going to be a sharing of two schools. They felt that they really wanted an opportunity for increased electives at both the middle schools and they could start off with a sharing of a 1.0 and then look to add, if needed, the next year, what they felt they could manage with that. Okay, keep going. Under the parent university, we needed some parent connection pieces in terms of how to support the achievement gap. And this particular initiative targets some of our new Americans who are especially a group that we're looking at. And we were able to reduce the total amount, but we wanted to sustain some support to that program and to, over time, try to have it to be sustainable. And then we move to the equitable climate and culture. So under the early learning priority, we wanted to maintain the EL teacher for their early years. And then, of course, we wanted to continue with the north-south bus. We thought that was an equity issue and to give us some flexibility around demographics and what's happening in our buildings right now. And we wanted to support the multilingual liaison costs with the 15,000 that was there, okay? Restorative practices, so this was a good one. This is a big chunk, I can't remember what the dollar amount was. But one of the things that I've been pushing staff on is to give us a comprehensive plans in terms of how we embed restorative practices into our schools and how do we build capacity so our staff are the ones leading. Right now, we're heavy on outside consultants and you have to start somewhere. But we were able to have a plan that we doubled what their operating cost was, operating budget was 40,000. So we've kind of doubled it. But also, what's not up here is that they do receive about another $100,000 through grants that they get. So they'll be able to get that next year. So this will help in terms of moving that agenda forward and continue that progress around restorative practices.
I'm sorry, just to clarify, what was that number prior?
It was 108,000.
108. Okay, so yeah, this is a good one here, too. The special education, this is a good one because all of our administrators have said that we need more supports around special educators and behavior management and how do we address that? And we're actually trying to go through an analysis around this work. And I'm going to get Laura, who's here. Can you talk a little bit about the work we're going to do with DMG? It's done work across the country and also has done some research in Vermont in the last several years. And I think that's going to be helpful in terms of us moving forward in terms of our special education and ELL supports and how we do that. So we didn't want to start off with doing the entire sixteen in the first year. So Laura worked with the staff and figured out what's our most urgent needs that we need to do. And then, once we do the analysis, we'll know exactly how much we need. So Laura, you want to talk a little bit about the DMG project?
I believe you're fairly familiar with Nate Levinson, the district management group, that's had some really great results in other states and in Vermont supporting change, systemic change, to support, yes, it is about restructuring special education, but it's also about restructuring tier-one and tier-two supports as well so that there is a more robust structure that can help reduce the need for special education. And that's the long-term view of it. It also, District Management Group has demonstrated good success in restructuring costs related to special education because of their, the way that they view providing internal services, for us to build structures and programs within our own systems. Quite frankly, it's difficult to be a prophet in your own land. And that was Nate Levinson's words to me when I said, boy, you know, I could take one of your reports that you wrote for one of the other districts. And, but I don't know that we have the structure now to really do that heavy lifting. And we discussed it at a great deal, at great length. We frankly have increased our Medicaid reimbursement dollars dramatically. The special ed department, student support services, has worked so hard to raise that money with the intention of using Medicaid reimbursement dollars to pay for this consultant to help do this heavy lifting for us. So hopefully, I'm being clear in this, to let you know that I believe that we need to do something different. We need to make a change that will help us restructure our district. So we are looking at, I'd love to have sixteen special educators tomorrow, more, right? I certainly would love that. I understand that we are not, we don't have bottomless pockets also in the district. So what I'd love to do is to say that, in the meantime, let's cover our real, most dire needs and then bring in the District Management Group to help us really look at, take a deep dive and analysis of what we really need as a district to make sure that our structures support all of our students at every level and where we need to build. It may not be, DMG may not say, we need sixteen special educators. They might say, we need five more reading teachers and six more math teachers and some more people doing AP classes that can meet the needs of EL students up at the high school, for example. And what, that's what we need, is we need somebody with a big, that can look at a big lens and help us work as a district together to make this change. So, and as I said, the cost of this group will be covered by Medicaid reimbursement dollars and will not need to come out of local funds. So anyway, that's...
Thank you, Laura. And one of the reasons why, you had a chance to hear from Nate this summer. He gave him a little presentation with us. And I've had a chance to hear him speak at other sessions. And he's done research in the last few years, I think it was ten different Vermont districts. And so we can share some of that. And so had some high confidence that he'd be able to help us look at what we're doing. And if you see his full presentation, he does a really good analysis around what we're doing in Vermont and what's happening in other districts and how we're ahead and how we can leverage that and some of the things that we can do. So we thought, before we take action, let's take a look so we can place the resources in the right place rather than putting the resources out and then saying, oh, we got to take that back. We got to do this, we got to do that. So right now, we're going to cover where we really need and then move forward. But we still are sort of supporting a social-emotional priority around the elementary social workers. So we still have done an investment there to distribute out to our elementary schools. And then, under the special education supports, one of the areas that Laura's been supporting last few years is unified sports, and we wanted to make sure that we have an investment there. We, I think only two years ago, maybe, Laura, a year ago, maybe, we started actually giving unified sports, actually, any funding. They're on their own, they kind of have their own. And we thought that we wanted to, at least, and the 2000 was enough for them to do some of the things that they wanted to do. So we wanted to kind of honor that and continue that under our social-emotional. Thank you. Security systems, all right. So this was, we kept this one because, you know, our director of facilities recommended it and we had it on our list from both the systems leaders and the board. And there was, you know, debate over either the plow truck or the design. But I think overwhelmingly, it came up, right? It was overwhelming, the security system design, which really aligns with what we're doing around safety and security. The last night at the curriculum committee meeting, upstairs was the SAPTO and we had Rich Amato talking about the safety plans and what we're doing and how we did an analysis and what we're going forward. So that will really support making sure our students are safe and we have all the tools in place for that. Nate, you want to make a comment around the bonding debt service? I know the board knows.
We wanted to emphasize, just to make sure that folks understand that built into this proposal is the funding to move forward with the capital plan and the high school. But as we noted, this first year for the high school, it's a relatively small investment. So there's not a big cost this first year, though. The real significant portion of the borrowing will be in some following two fiscal years if our timeline, if we stay on our timeline. So folks should understand that, you know, sometimes the question comes up, oh, what about the high school? Is that in here? The answer is, yes, it's in here, but it's a relatively small investment in the first year. And so the debt service impact, as we talked about during that campaign, is pretty minimal in this first year.
Okay, next slide. All right, go ahead.
So, so we, as Yao mentioned, we went back. We used all of the feedback that we got. If you look at the, take the time to compare what Yao just ran through to the lists up there, you'll see that most of the things that had lots of dots were the things that were included on that proposal, sometimes with some adjustments. But when we looked at the impact of that, of all that spending on our projected tax rate, it was approaching a five percent increase. And we felt like the feedback from the board at the last meeting was that the comfort level was more in the four percent range. And it was kind of an informal, you know, discussion, but that was kind of the sense we came away with. So then Yao directed us to go back and start looking at other things that we could reduce in the budget that wouldn't have an impact on reducing our instructional services or hindering our ability to effectively operate or administer the district. And we identified a number of items in there that we were able to reduce spending, some of which, some of which involved just removing some money that had been, that really was only needed on a one-time basis for the year that we're in right now, like money we spent on adding the maker space to admins and some other kind of one-time investments, things that we've paid for. But we also did an analysis of some of the spending, the budgeting and spending trends in some other areas. And we listed them up there, such as workers' compensation, utilities, things like that. Just comparing kind of the trend of what's the pattern we're seeing in spending over a few years? Especially when it comes to utilities, you can have things like a warm or a cold winter, for example, and the amount that you spend on those types of items can vary somewhat substantially. But I was able to look back and see over a few years, do I see a trend that gives me confidence that I can kind of reduce in some of those areas? We have made significant investments over the years in energy efficiency upgrades and that sort of thing. So I think we're starting to reap some of the benefits. And I felt like we could scale back from there without worrying that we wouldn't have enough money and we'd have to turn the lights off early or something like that. And another couple of examples of investments we've made that I think, I feel like have proven enough that we can start taking advantage, some of those savings. On the transportation front, folks may remember that we went through a process, a discussion with the city and ultimately, and also with Green Mountain Transit. And we switched, we moved away from using Mountain Transit, which is the private bus company, to using Green Mountain Transit, formerly CCTA, to do our early release busing. That combined with the fact that because we were using them, the city could take on some of those costs. That saved us a lot of money, we were able to reduce there. Additionally, we replaced the use of what used to be rented vehicles for special ed transportation for certain students with actually vehicles that we'd purchased. So that obviously had a higher upfront cost. We did that previously, and that's allowed us to reduce our annual costs for those vehicles. So we found some savings there. Kelly Services, we've talked about the fact that we've switched to using more in-house substitutes. And we've seen that our use of Kelly Services has been lower than our budgeted amounts the last couple of years. You know, that's always a tricky one to predict. But I felt like, based on the fact that we have now added second building subs to all of our elementary middle schools, that we could further reduce the amount of money that we would expect to spend on Kelly Services substitutes. And then finally, we looked at our, the money that we budget each year to pay the private preschool provider. So folks might remember, Act 166, the universal pre-K law, requires school districts to make a payment to private preschools. And if you noticed in the news recently, there was a lot of discussion about the fact that there are actually fewer providers than when that law went into place and there are fewer slots. And while we, obviously not a good thing in a general sense, what we noticed was that the projected amounts that we had built into the budget to pay for Burlington students in those slots, we weren't going to hit those projections this year. And we felt like we could then therefore scale back what we expected, you know, the number of students we expected to serve in those placements next year. So while not a good news story, maybe in a general sense in terms of the state of, you know, preschool slots that are available, it did allow us to scale back our budget. So altogether, these reductions totaled over $500,000. And we felt like they were things that are not going to take away from or reduce our ability to serve students in any way, nor are they going to gut our administrative capacity or limit our ability to operate the district in its non-instructional functions as well. So it felt like a responsible thing to do. I feel confident that, you know, that the savings that I'm projecting there are reasonable, that I'm not being overly ambitious in assuming that we're going to have savings that we can achieve, but that they're also significant enough to be meaningful. So that was the idea behind the non-instructional reductions. And I'll just advance here. So this slide summarizes both the kind of baseline growth and then you can see the new investments, which is a little over 1.9 million. And then that's offset by that half a million dollars of reductions that we identified. So you can think of that as, we're kind of buying 1.9 million dollars of new investments at a net cost of only about 1.4 million dollars. We needed to do that to achieve the target tax rate, which on the next slide, I believe, you can see here. So... So, in these two columns, you can see what the tax rate impact of this scenario would be if we didn't have the surplus funds as revenue. And then in the rightmost column, you can see, once we apply that 1.4 million dollars, you can see that the net tax impact, based on, again, the, you know, the variables as we know them today, would be just a hair under a 4% increase. So, that's how we get to 4%. We filled in some of the blanks on this chart here. You can see that it shows our growth in both the total budget and the general fund. And it shows both equalized tax rate and the actual tax rate. I highlighted a couple of things that I wanted to just draw your attention to. First of all, the general fund increase, you can see that what we're putting forward this year would be substantially more. We had a very low general fund increase last year. And so, this year, obviously, what we're putting forward would be somewhat higher, but viewed over two years, we're looking at still less than a 3% growth in our general fund on average. And then the two tax rate columns, just as a reminder to folks, the difference between the equalized tax rate and the actual tax rate is the impact of that CLA figure. So, the equalized tax rate is a useful way to compare Burlington's spending to other school districts because you can compare essentially our, our education spending per equalized pupil that way and it's a kind of apples-to-apples comparison. But what taxpayers will actually see and what you will have to be prepared to discuss with them is, you know, what appears on their bill is their actual tax rate. And that is the equalized tax rate then adjusted by the CLA. And so, you can see that there's a pretty significant impact, about three percentage points there is a result, is a direct result of the change in the CLA. Still with me?
We get that?
Yeah.
Okay. Me, one of the pieces for me is that if you look at the third last time, the .5. So, last year, we had a less than 1% increase. And this year, we're gonna be able to invest almost 5%. But if you look at the tax impact, it's, it's pretty close. So, we're gonna, we're getting more or relatively the same based on the variables and the numbers from this year. So, that's, that's good news in that sense. Okay?
Yep. For those who were not in attendance last night, there was a little bit of feedback from the city council in our annual presentation to them. I noted it up here. You know, there was some concern about the district's ability to fully implement some of the kind of ambitious and kind of more intense initiatives that are on the list of ideas. And there was also some kind of concern and emphasis on being aware of the fact that, that we can't view this particular year's budget and tax impact in isolation. We have to be considerate of the fact that we know over the next few years, for the additional debt service alone associated with our capital investments, that's gonna drive larger tax rate increases. So, I think the council is kind of expressing that concern of like, hey, let's, let's view this in a multi-year context.
Yeah. The other piece I'll add here is the, I know I spoke to a number of councilors, they wanted us to be aware around the recent support from the community around our bonds and how we sort of calculating that and what we're gonna bring forward in terms of, we've got really good support around that and how are we gonna message in our campaign around understanding that we've considered that in our deliberations here. So, it's something for the board to consider.
Yeah, just one other thing, it's a little bit of an aside, but, but I, and I don't know that this is official, that the city's officially committed to this, but based on the conversations that I've had, it's my expectation that the city will be asking for municipal tax rate increase this year. That hasn't happened for a couple of years. So, I think it's just worth the board being aware of that because that typically, when the, if the city doesn't ask, it's different, it works different from the school budget. If they don't need a tax rate increase, there's nothing that needs to go on the ballot. So, potentially this spring, we could have a municipal tax rate increase along with the school budget and possibly memorial auditorium as well. So, just something to, to think about. That may not all happen, but I think it's worth at least bearing in mind the possibility.
There are indications that that will happen.
Right.
I thought they told them.
They, they, I mean, again, I think...
Yeah, it's still the ups and downs of the side, but we're just giving you based on...
Right.
Information that signals that we're getting that...
I think they've been, yeah, they've been backing away from that. I don't know, and maybe it's the decision's made definitively at this point. I might not be entirely current on that. So, one last thing, we took a look at, and I think there's gonna be more discussion of it, it sounds like later tonight, but we took a look at some of the proposed reductions. There's a series of reductions proposed by some board members. And by and large, we didn't think that they were necessarily in the best interest of the district, but we did find one that we felt like we could actually work with. We looked at a role that we have right now, a former principal performing a couple of different roles. And based on what's being done there, we felt like it's really two different functions being performed by the same person, one of which is being kind of our first call district principal substitute. We could just eliminate that work, doesn't eliminate the need for principal substitutes, but we could just use our per diem substitutes. That has the potential to save us money. Obviously, it maybe means more work finding them periodically, but we felt like we could live with that. That potentially save about $20,000. And then the other half of that role, the hope is that we'll still be able to find the money to do that work, but that we could use federal grants, Title II money to do that work. Now, that, you know, comes with strings, we have to make sure it qualifies, like it would, it's risky, it's not a guarantee that we could do that. But if we decided to go that route, we could save about $40,000 nearly in general fund costs. So, potentially still have the service using Title II money, not guaranteed, but it would at least allow us to reduce the general fund by 60,000. And that, if we did that, that would be another $60,000 that could either be used to just reduce the total budget increase and reduce the tax rate, or if the board chose to pick some other items, for example, and add them into that scenario we presented or whatever other combination there might be. So, that was another opportunity for a little more savings.
I think that's relatively it. The last two slides are just the ballot language. And then lastly, we turned it over to the board. So, we've, I think we've, we've listened to your comments and your direction the last two, several board meetings and have kind of prepared representation of your needs and also our staff needs within that 4%. And we've done, what we've done every year is sort of look for cost savings. We look for cost savings where we found that didn't impact in the classroom. So, we put that into the budget to keep the, the tax rate down. And then we've also had this added 60,000 if the board choose to do that. We haven't allocated that, so we're leaving that up to the board to decide what you would like to do with that, if you wanna put that onto the, the tax thing, or there are some items that you feel are worthy enough to spend that 60,000 on doing. So, that is our recommendation based on your feedback. And then, so now, it's up to the board to decide if they want to stick with that or elevate it or debate it or whatever you decide to do with it.
Great. Thank you Superintendent O'Bang and Director Leibery. We appreciate the work that went into that. Yep, next.
Point of, point of order, I think what we agree to is there's questions for clarifications, but if there's questions on the content, that's gonna be the next agenda item.
I guess there's clarifying questions.
Great. Commissioner Barlow.
One is just around our current level of social worker spending and did all members get... 180,000 hour increase, just wondering what our current...
I don't know the current level off the top of my head, we could look that up, but I can say that the increase, the intent there is to bring all of the social workers at the elementary schools up to full-time. So, that was kind of like the standard we used, was let's provide a full-time social worker at every school and that's the money that would be required to do it because they don't all have that right now.
Thank you, that, I was curious about that as well.
My second question is around the 1.4 million dollar fund balance, the surplus is going to be applied as revenue to this year. Does that create a structural problem for next year if we're using it? Or is some of the money in the budget contingency, in certain contingencies so that it wouldn't necessarily be spent and wouldn't create that 1.4 million dollars?
No, it would, it would essentially continue and to some extent increase that imbalance, that structural gap.
I'm not sure if every, all board members understand that concept around that because we have a surplus and we're gonna apply it. We're still gonna have to make that up next year. So, if we're applying a million dollars, we gotta find a million dollars. The only other strategy that's worked well that we've done in the past is, I think is partly why we've been able to get surpluses, is we've tried to find dedicated items that are one-time, so we're not beholden to spend it again next year. But right now, we're applying it to the, to the tax movement and done that analysis. So, just so people understand that if we're using it, that we do have a responsibility to try to find that dollars again next year.
Yeah, and an example of what you're talking about, small, but like the security system design costs, right? We're not gonna have to design the security system every single year. So, that's like 168,000 that would essentially be one-time in nature. If we were sitting here a year from now and we had that system designed, we wouldn't need to budget that 168,000 again, we would be able to reduce it. So, that doesn't create a structural issue. But when we talk about adding other services that we expect to retain year after year after year, we, we obviously have to do that. And we either have to continue to produce surpluses or we have to just increase the budget by 1.4 million dollars just to retain the services that we have.
Great.
Clarifying question.
Yeah.
I think this is...
Commissioner Wick.
Thanks. I think, just to be clear, I think the question Commissioner Barlow asked, I have that same question. In our budget, this line item budget that I envision this year, do we have any line item that's called contingency?
Uh, yes, it's about $300,000. It's in our, it's like kind of at the, if you look at the budget document that's online, you'll see it at the end of each section. It's kind of bolded and it says contingency, 300,000.
Thanks.
Any other clarification? Commissioner Ivanka?
I have a clarification question for slide 35. We're adding a 1.0 FD elementary EL teacher. How would that teacher be split among the six schools?
So, this was a request that came from the principals and the, the director. So, I think in her analysis, in terms of what's already allocated, another 1.0 would give the balance. So, there are some already there, so it might be split .5 here, .5 here to give the balance to the schools. I know they do share in terms of support, but it's not out, it's not like one's gonna go to just the one school. It's to be able to support.
All six schools. And then similar question for slide, and perhaps I should have asked Laura when she was up there, 37, there are 3.0 FD special ed teachers. These are just for elementary schools?
She's not here, but we did, yes, so...
Is it tied to each elementary school?
The 3.0, is that one, which one are you looking at?
Yeah, she's at the 3.0. I mean, it's not, we're definitely not saying every elementary school is just gonna get half of a special educator. I mean, the idea is to look at the caseloads, the intensity of need and allocate it wherever kind of we need that. It's not to just do it kind of as everyone automatically getting that much because depending on shifts in the population, it...
Right.
And so, this number is based on her analysis in terms of, okay, what do I think, where are the hotspots, what do I need that I can make sure that I can cover any sort of real urgent needs to start off with, right?
Okay. And then last but not least, of the 168,000 for the security system, what part of that would be for the high school?
The design of the whole system would include the high school. And if I, I'm almost sure about this. So, the design of the whole system, it's a district-wide approach, would include the high school. It's, I don't know that I can say a specific portion of it would go toward just the high school, but the high school as well as all of our other buildings would be incorporated in, in the kind of the design of the system. It's supposed to be comprehensive, supposed to make sure that we have a kind of standard that we can meet at all of our, at all of our buildings and locations.
Because my question is for the high school in its current status or in its future status?
No, definitely be considering what...
Okay.
Yeah.
The remodeled high school. Thanks.
Yes, Commissioner Olwell.
So, is, is this, I understood it was just the electronics for each of the buildings?
No.
No?
Designing the system. This is not the, the hardware.
Oh, okay.
That's later and more expensive.
So, I would ask that, you know, we follow up, Commissioner Pillsbury and I with Director Spalding on what that entails, just for more clarification for that, yep, for Thursday. Great. Commissioner Carey.
Just the two teachers that were hired for Flynn and S.A., are they included in this budget for next year?
The two teachers that were added in the middle of the year are not part of this. No.
Anyone else?
Yeah, might as well ask, sorry. The 2.4 additions, 2.4 FTE at BHS, does any of that include adding back the computer programming?
I can't say definitively in terms of what, but we know that there is a need to offer more course offerings. And so, we would look to the school to allocate that appropriately. I know that was something that was recommended in terms of that, so I'm sure they would consider that. But I know in their schedule, they need that, that many more, so that would help them.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else? Alright, seeing them, thank you, thank you again. So, next on the agenda will be item 11. So, it'll be board deliberations on the FY '20 budget. And Commissioner Fisher sent around...
Can I ask, sorry, may I keep with a question?
Oh, on the last slide, there?
Yeah, with the 60,000, is there something you wanna do with that or do we roll that back or do we want to throw that in to reduce the, the tax impact?
Don't we deliberate on that a bit?
Yeah, I was thinking, can we get back to you on that or instead of, that way we will...
Don't you forget about it.
Yes, we will not.
Otherwise, we'll take it back.
Thank you. Thank you. It's, sorry, I didn't mean to be rude and not answer the question or propose it to the board, but yeah, I think we'll, that'll be part of our deliberation. So, thank you. So, again, back to Commissioner Fisher had sent out some guidelines. I'd like to have him manage this portion of the agenda, this agenda item. And like I said, we appreciate all the work that's gone into this up to this point. We look to the next section as input gathering and this is why we're here. And so, I appreciate everyone's time that they put into that as well as the district's time. And I'm looking forward to the next hour or two for this. Thank you, Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you, Chair Wool. So, please bear with me, I will be try and be accurate as, so as to be fair to all commissioners, but yet have the heart of Chair Wool. So, we're gonna start with a presentation on the consolidated budget proposal, spend 10 minutes on that. And then we'll start to do round robin of commissioners who will get the floor for five minutes to ask questions and get answers, that's all-inclusive. We'll go through all the commissioners. You can yield your time to another commissioner. And once we're through with a five-minute round, we'll go on to a two-minute round, or sorry, three-minute round. And then depending upon the time and chair's discretion, we'll see about further rounds. So, any clar, any questions on clarifying on the format? So, why don't we start with the consolidated budget proposal? I'm gonna look to you, Commissioner Carey, on how you want to, you and your colleagues want to go through this.
I could talk a little bit about how it was formed. And it's pretty much self-explanatory, but we basically had an ad hoc committee, which I guess functioned like a finance committee on Saturday, supposed to last for two hours, it lasted for eight. And we went through a lot of the information that we've, we've seen around the room today and came up with these additions and these reductions. I just wanna read the bold at the top because there was a concern of all of us present that we're lacking some kind of focus for improving teaching and learning in the district. And so, we formulated this very simple and straightforward statement at the top, which I'll read right now. "In order to focus the district's efforts on supporting early education, providing direct services to students, narrowing the achievement gap, raising the bar of academic achievement at all levels, and supporting our magnet schools, we propose a budget that includes the following additions and reductions." It's pretty much self-explanatory. We had, as you can see from the top, we had quite a few people contribute their ideas to the different items you see here presented. It was, it was very interesting work that we did. It was very painful work when we talked about the reductions because we were under the impression, or at least I'm under the impression, that in order to make these additions, we needed to make significant reductions in the... needed to make significant reductions in the current expenditures. So that's the reason that the reductions are listed here as well. Board members got a document with specific numbers next to each of the reductions, which we eliminated, just because it might offend individuals. So we omitted that, but we kept the, the numbers as, we, let me just go back for a minute. You'll see on the top part, there are asterisks, which represent the changes that we made at the very last minute today. So there's just one asterisk at the top, and it's number 18. It's Proficiency-Based PLP and Advisory Coordinator. By the way, when we were looking through these slides, it was really nice to see the overlap. And I wish there was some kind of way to show that right now, but there seems to be a lot of overlap in the two efforts that have been made to formulate a viable budget for the upcoming year. In the, in the bottom section, you'll see, and again, these asterisks represent changes from the original document because we sent the original document out to board members when we had finished it on Saturday, and, or it may have been Sunday morning, and there were some problems in getting that. But I think everyone did get the original. And then again, today, we just made these adjustments because we got some accurate numbers from Nate just last, just yesterday at four o'clock regarding the specific costs for some of the reductions. So, so the numbers varied. The totals varied from the original document based on that accuracy of the estimates that we just received. Are there any questions so far on what I've said? Sure.
Which items in your additions or reductions, I guess, most of the reductions, but were not in any of the material that we've all deliberated on?
I believe it was just number 18. Just number 18. Oh, you mean that we just saw?
Yeah, things that we've all been talking about as an entire board, which things have you added that were not part of prior discussions?
None.
No, I did.
Oh, okay.
To be honest, no, I added a full-time student activities director at the high school. And I can speak to that at some point.
Okay.
Item 16.
We also, we also added one guidance counselor for each of, for equity purposes for each of the middle schools. And you'll find in the original, we had one for Pan Fair post. We had decided for equity each middle school because they're large, band size classes worth, and we're thinking that we should be equitable for both Hunt and Edmonds. That, those are two, there are two things that hadn't been really discussed prior. And the other thing was making, returning to full-time magnet school coaches in each of the buildings. So they have full-time two implemented team at the name of the school.
Can I ask a follow-up?
I don't think we're supposed to... I'm sorry, but I don't think...
Yeah, that's fine.
I think that's just not fair. So I think we're presenting, you're presenting this document, and then move to questions later.
But also, we have to say that the two, the SA and Flynn teachers are not in this.
The, the aren't in our proposal.
In ours, but they aren't in the other.
And that is because we were reading like we received the latest information on the PowerPoint at our last meeting, indicated at the bottom that those teaching positions do not be included in the budget.
Commissioner Pillsbury, can you speak up? My apologies for point of order. Speak up, so I can hear you.
No, just... Okay. I just said that we added, we noticed in the PowerPoint by Nate that the teachers at both Flynn and SA were not included in his carry-on budget, so we added them.
So Commissioners, anything else to add to introduce?
I think it's important to say that...
I very, I'll just reinforce what Steve was saying. Our goal was to make sure that we hear so well for the students not getting their services, whether it's students at various levels, we hear parents talk about issues in classrooms, we hear teachers emailing us about students not getting special services and all of it. We're trying to make sure that we can provide as much students' services as possible. That was our goal. And this is really all about students at primary level getting a good start off, and then again, supporting what we could with middle school students and high school students. It has nothing to do with personal opinions about people and their, and their position and how they do the position or anything like that. It's like, okay, we have to make some hard decisions if we really want to, as a board, we are servicing our students and all of their needs. This is really, that was the bottom line here. And what could we do? And it, it's interesting that we didn't include the, this does not have any, it does not include the surplus, but we came up with a four, I think it's, we, from our figures, and obviously we're only amateurs, we have a 4.44% increase in assumed tax, or 4.5% increase over last year's budget. So it's pretty, not that far off from what the administration proposes. But we, we think we have here a program that people will see that we're really going back to, our primary goal is to make sure we serve our students that are beginning with us right from preschool right through.
I'll say one last thing, and I'm just speaking for myself and not anybody else, but I mean, clearly, it just, we seem to struggle to fund our schools adequately. And not everyone's going to get everything they want. I do think it makes sense, every year when we're looking at reducing teachers and staff, that we also look at what's going on in central office. I feel it's only fair, if we're going to be reducing teachers and staff, that we also always look at central office as a potential for reduction as well. And maybe that's already done, I don't know. But in terms of fairness, and in terms of equity and big picture over time, it makes sense, I think it makes sense. That's all.
I would mention just the, the need in the preschool, not in the preschool, in the early grades to make, make sure as much as we possibly can that students are getting, again, the services, what Keith was mentioning, the services that they need to get up to speed in terms of reading by the third grade, and that's why there's an emphasis here on that. I wish that we had more to go for the high school. We have some things here for everything, middle schools, high schools, but again, the emphasis on, is on the elementary grades. We know that by getting kids up to speed early, in the long run, it's a huge savings. And we heard from Laura last night very eloquently about the fast track from understaffed, early grades to special ed. And that's happening in our district at an alarming rate. And it was nice to hear her confirm that more teachers and personnel in the classrooms could avoid that progression into special ed. And then the numbers go up in terms of how to deal with that. Something else I want to say, but I, it slipped my mind right now, but I'll come back to it.
So we're at, we're at 10 minutes.
Okay, okay.
All right, so what I'm going to do is I'm just going to go, actually by ward, by how it is on the, on the website. So it'll be Eric, Stephen, Liz, Martine, myself, Claire, Monica, Chief, Jeannie, Kathy, Mark, Jeff, Isaac, Saban, and then we'll go reverse order.
So we're going to do questions and then statements.
So you can take, you can...
And then what's going to happen?
You can take five minutes to ask questions, get answers, or make statements. So you have five minutes of the floor.
But ask questions of this group, or ask questions...
Of, of the, of Yael and his, and Nate?
All the budget information.
All the budget, any questions you have around the budget.
And then make statements, and then discussion's over?
Yep, you have the floor for five minutes.
And then discussion's over tonight?
No.
No.
Oh, well then what happens?
So I'm, you're asking the entire budget process after tonight?
No, I said tonight.
For tonight, Claire.
After everybody has five minutes, then discussion ends.
Then, then we do another round where everyone gets three minutes?
Oh, another round of three minutes for anything?
For, for per person for the budget.
For questions?
For questions, for statements. You get the floor for three minutes.
So three, five, three.
Work session.
No, five, and then three.
Oh, I thought we were doing three minutes of questions first.
Five minutes of questions, five minutes of the floor, and three minutes on the floor. Just refer to the email, it's all in there.
And we're allowed to give our time.
You may yield your time to another commissioner.
Got it.
But, and so, I was just confused. So I don't understand how many make statements without asking questions.
You can.
But you said statements first.
No, no.
You get the floor for five minutes.
Whatever you want to say. So I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Is this thing on?
I think maybe if, if Eric, are you prepared?
I am.
And maybe, maybe an example will help.
I'm going to do an interpretive dance. And I'm going to need at least three volunteers to give me their time. If I could just understand a couple of sort of basics here. I mean, it really looks like we have, we're like, the, the model here that's being proposed is moving away from the embedded coach model and really doubling down on the interventionist model. There's a, seems to be a hu, like, I don't know what the six embedded instructional coaches are. Is that six FTEs? That's not us, it's...
That's a question.
Yes, yes, it is.
So I'm, I mean, I'm assuming that's, and those are probably more expensive FTEs than... So I mean, you're looking at maybe like a three-quarter of a million dollar difference just based on shifting from the coach model to the interventionist model. If I could just throw that immediately out there and take a minute or two of my time to answer instinctively, how do you react to that? A lot of that.
No, I think we've stated the case already in terms of how, one of the strategies around closing the achievement gap around the coaching and interventions. Right now, we have coaches and interventions.
Right.
And they're working in concert. And we're working with the resources that we have.
And we just got, if you, if we could just go back and forth, and we just got a pretty involved presentation in favor of the coaching model.
Right.
You know?
I wouldn't want, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to stay the course. I wouldn't want to redirect the course and say, let's stop the coaching model, let's move to something else at this point.
Because I have gotten a lot of positive feedback about the coaching model, both from teachers and from friends who happen to be teachers. And this seems like a rather drastic shift away from that. Are we removing the coaches? Are those just in the elementary level, or is that district-wide?
It's a tricky question to answer, partially because of the kind of convoluted way that the coaches are funded. But basically, it's a removal of the coaches from the elementary level schools and retaining others throughout the district. The chief coach is retained, along with, I believe it's one or two others, I don't have that right in front of me right now. And it doesn't necessarily, you know, coaching is about teach, about coaching teachers. And it has nothing to do with the fact that these coaches are, are not excellent teachers. They are, they have been. They've shown their dedication to the district in many ways for many, many years. It's about redirecting that money to the places where we feel it's needed. So that's one role of the coach. It's focused on teachers, teaching teachers. We're trying to shift the focus to working directly with students. The aspect of the coach's job...
Steve, if I could just take, take it back, I have a couple more. Now, we have these three behavior coaches that we are pulling, and in the district proposal, there was, it was three special ed teachers with behavioral coaching. So we're basically talking about a difference of six behavioral coaching qualified professionals out of the system. There are three, I'm taking, we got three behavior...
Oh, yeah, we would be taking...
We'd be taking three, three out, but also not getting the three you guys are talking about putting in.
Right, absolutely.
So it's a deficit of six from yours to this one. And then what does principal of principals mean? Number three.
Does anyone want to answer that?
Is that Bonnie's position?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So that was created, can I answer?
Uh huh. He's got the floor.
Sure, sure. That was my last.
At least when I got on the board and maybe the year after, or the year after that. There's a big, in my experience, there's a big discrepancy between the Hunt Middle School, Hunt and Edmunds Middle School program, pedagogy, culture, climate, outcomes, you name it. And so there was a request to start to standardize it.
One minute, Eric.
And so the, the solution to that was at first, creating a position that would work with both to develop all of that with them. There were staff changes. I still don't think the outcomes are there. There were staff changes, and then because of budget issues, that position was then broadened to address a range of other issues, training issues, they're allowing new principals. So I think that would improve.
Okay. And number four, district communication position, that's Fire Russ. Thank you.
Yes.
I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner Gorman. All right, Commissioner Carey, floor's yours.
All right, well, I'll just talk a little bit about this, and specifically, number 10 on the top addition, and is that, you know, there's this mentor system that other systems use throughout the state, and it's, it's an effective system whereby new teachers, because again, as I, as I was beginning to say earlier, a major portion of the coach's role within our district is to aid new teachers who, for any various reasons, may need assistance. Around the state, that is not necessarily the job of the coaches, but it's the job of the teacher mentors. And so a mentor system provides that support that new teachers need, but it provides it from someone who is right there in the building, who perhaps is teaching the same curriculum, who has many, many years of experience, and is willing to share that experience and materials with the new teacher. So it's a system that, that kind of supports new teachers instead of the coaches if they were, if they were to be gone. So it's not as if we're leaving that aspect of the coaching job high and dry, but we're trying to provide for that in a way that does many things. Actually, that number 10, fund 40 new mentors, really, it honors experienced employees in the district who are willing and ready and able to share their vast experience with newcomers. It provides them a very minimum stipend, so it's an award, I mean, that's why the money is there. It's a, it's a financial reward for, for their efforts. And so I, I'll just talk about that, I guess. I, I think it's important that we, given the discussions that we've had around this table regarding the two positions at SA and Flynn, as a, as a kind of a Band-Aid to the issues that they were dealing with earlier in the year, I think it's important that we continue to fund that and not just pull the rug out from under that strategy, you know, immediately. And I, I'm not even sure if those positions are in place yet, and we're halfway through the year. But it's important, we did that for a reason, and, and that reason is going to be there in September, as it was last September, as it still is, so that needs to be funded as well. And I guess, I guess that's it. I'll, I'll just say that the, you know, I would love to have, and I know everyone around the table would love to have all the money, and Laura said this a little bit earlier too, to do what we really need to do to improve teaching and learning within the district. But again, we don't have that money, and what we can do is start to provide services where they're needed. And what I mean by that is direct services to students in the form of educated, dedicated adults. Because of all the studies about every change in every system that you've ever read about, the bottom line is, the most effective way to affect positive change in young people's learning careers is by connecting them with adults who care and are there every day with them. So that's basically... So, that's basically the philosophy behind this, which, it speaks for itself in many ways, based on the focus on the early ed. So, I'll, I'll stop at that. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Commissioner Carey. Commissioner Curry, the floor is yours for five minutes. Do you, do you have any clarifying questions of the format?
No, I guess, so, yes, I do. So, does this mean we're, then, now we're doing five minutes? Does this mean that we're just gonna get three minutes after this?
Right now, you have five minutes?
And then, we're gonna get three.
And then, you're gonna get three.
I had it backwards. So, question for the administration, does the district proposal cut teachers or non-instructional staff?
Did we cut teachers?
Yeah, or non-instructional.
We did not cut teachers.
Did, any cuts to non-instructional staff?
We have not cut, um, non-instructional staff.
No cuts to any non-instructional positions?
No, but besides the, the last minute addition around the, the principal position that we just put on the table that we were willing to find dollars for. But we have made reductions the last three years, centrally upwards of, I think, around 1.2 million dollars of reductions to central office every year, if you look back at the slides.
So, a total of 1.2 million reduction in ad, central office administration over the last three years. So, I, I wanted to ask questions of the rogue group that met on Saturday without letting anyone know. So, we have a non-transparent, budget parallel, shadow government budget process. Do mentor, the mentoring process you're talking about, do they apply to be mentors? And what kind of criteria is used for hiring them?
The, the mentors are teachers in the district right now.
Right, so, it's my understanding that right now, as we just, as we've learned, there are mentors that are assigned to teachers. That happens right now. You were just talking about mentoring systems all over the state that you're quoting as a model.
It varies from school to school.
So, there's no consistent standardized?
Typically, a principal will ask teachers if they're interested in being mentors, or he or she will appoint mentors. But that's a, that's a really good question, because it's crucial when we, if we implement this, it's ver, it's crucial to discuss how that, those connections are made. It's very crucial.
And so, those mentors could have been teaching in the school for 20 years and may not have received any feedback on their teaching styles or pedagogy, or updated their training?
Not if the administration is doing the job it's supposed to do in terms of evaluations.
Do those mentors give feedback on how a teacher's delivering pedagogy or differentiation in the classroom?
Yes, absolutely.
So, then, that would mean those teachers understand differentiation?
Sure.
And is that, and is differentiation something teachers get professional development in every year?
Shall I answer that?
Around the state?
Yes, the differentiation is so old in terms of practices around the state that every teacher in the, in the state knows about differentiation and practices it regularly.
So, it's my understanding from being a parent in this district for 15 years and on the board for five years that we have yet to crack the nut about the kind of differentiation in the classroom that's needed in our district with the kind of student complexity that we have. And so, it's my understanding from the three presentations we've had, plus a two-hour discussion last night, that the, the key difference with the co, embedded coaching is that they are beginning to actually respond on a personalized level to each teacher's strengths and how they can apply their skills in new ways based on the most recent data and research around differentiation in the classroom where you have a student body that has significantly changed in terms of its emotional and social and learning needs and abilities. And I don't believe that exists anywhere else in the state in terms of our student body. Maybe Winuski, I don't believe they're doing the embedded coaching model. So, and the other thing I wanted, I know that there's actually a coach here, Shannon Roche. I wanted to ask you, do coaches, are coaches just there to aid new teachers? Is that the purpose of coaches?
Not at all, not at all.
And so, so then, is it just circumstantial, coincidental, that the coaches are with new teachers? Or are with coaches some old teachers?
We're actually not with, I mean, we're there to support every teacher in the building, new for every. And then, Colleen Powell's role as like the mentor of new teachers--
Sorry, sorry.
Go ahead.
Sorry. Her, her focus is all on the teachers, whereas, like, I'm at Edmonds Elementary, and so, my focus is on every teacher in the building.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
And I just wanted to say that I, I still don't understand the framework for this budget. I mean, it seems to me what we heard last night is that comprehensive wraparound approach would be anchored in tier one, and then we heard that professional development was the next need, and then we heard the interventionist. And so, my thinking would be that we do that over the next three years, that we focus on that comprehensive strategy so that we are building it out based on best practice and based on what our student body needs.
Thank you, Commissioner Curry. Commissioner Gulick?
No, it's, it's the RET on mic. Thank you. So, I don't, I don't know if rogue is quite the right word. I think we should all be encouraged to meet in small groups and, and work. And I know I took many hours out of my Saturday to work on this. This is obviously a document that needs discussion, tweaking, and may not end up flying at all. But I think it's, it was a cool exercise. I'm glad I was able to take part in it. So, who are we? Do we know as a district exactly who we are? Because I can say, as I'm doing this work, I'm not feeling like I have a good sense. I have read and I have reread our strategic plan, and I've looked at the three boulders or the three rocks, and it doesn't really tell me who we are, and it doesn't really help me do this work. We talk about narrowing the achievement gap, and yet, when we see it working at a school like SA, we make changes that make it harder for them to keep narrowing the achievement gap. We talk about being multicultural, and yet, we remove language teachers out of schools. I don't always see that what we do is in concert with what we profess to be. And I hope that we can make strides in having a strategic plan that really drives the work that we do and really informs every, every choice that we make. I, I don't, I don't have that right now. So, this was hard. The coaching model, I'm lucky, I work in education, I get to talk to a ton of educators all the time, including administrators. And there is a lot to be said for coaches and coaching models, there's no doubt about it. And yet, one of the things I hear over and over and over again is, coaching models work best when staffing is, is not an issue. So, it's hard for me to reconcile funding a coaching model when we also have teachers and administrators clamoring for more staffing. And again, if I'm wrong here, please correct me, but it seems as though this year there were two, almost like emergency type of pleas for staffing that, that wasn't there. So, it's hard for me to get my head around not meeting some really basic staffing needs where there are social and emotional issues that are not being met with, and then having this coaching model, which again, I think is great, I love it. But are we there? You know, are we there? Are we able to fund this, given our needs? I also wanted to speak to something else that we were talking about earlier. Let's see. Coaching, staffing, mentors, no. I, I have a lot to say, but tho, those are obviously the biggies. I'm still confused about central office, because when I talk to people who know the district and have known it for a long time, you know, I hear that HR used to be, there used to be just three people in that department, and then it ran really smoothly, so I don't quite understand what's going on there. I would like to hear more about that. It would help me make some of these decisions. I was the person who asked for the student activities director at the high school. I feel as though, I've said this before, there's a ton of data that talks about success in freshman year. Will set you up not just for a successful high school career, but also lifelong, you know, benefits. If we could have every student in our high school in an activity, in a club, in a sport, I, I just can't fathom what that would do for our students in terms of learning and so forth. And, you know, we need to be creative. Are there ways for students to get micro credits in some of these clubs? Are there ways for students to get credit if they are a three-sport athlete or a two-sport athlete? Let's be creative. Let's, let's not do what everyone else is doing. Let, let's find a way to, to do this right. So, that was my thinking on that one. And that's it. I think I'm done.
Thank you, Commissioner Gulick. I'm gonna put myself on the clock. You want to watch me?
I can time you.
Everybody else can watch me. So, obviously, we've talked a lot about the coaching model. I was not convinced Superintendent Obang, when we heard last year of why we're taking resources from interventionist to coaching. We heard research at the, at the retreat we did, and it did not say coaching over interventionists. And so, like some of my fellow colleagues, when I heard, like, last night, I heard a teacher who was like, "I'm struggling with a mixed one-two, and I can't do basic, can't meet my basic needs," I think is the quote she said, right? And so, I, I get the idea of professional development and improving teachers, and, and in the military, they call it a force multiplier, right? You take one and it multiplies. If you can coach multiple people, makes, I, I get the concept. But it seems like we've spent, we're spending a lot of money on the coaching model when we're not meeting the basic needs. We've heard lots of testimony, and I've heard, in, you know, as a board member and outside, the impact, the, the impact that interventions have had. And of course, we don't see the benefit of the coaching model yet. It's too early. So, I'm in favor of doing some coaching, but I, I am in, also in favor of putting money back into direct instruction via the interventionists. I heard that it wasn't working, it wasn't closing the achievement gap, but I did not see evidence that the achievement gap was not closing because we were using interventionist model. So, I didn't really see tha, that there. So, I, I'm in favor of doing some coaching. I also am concerned about some of the reductions in this proposal from the working group, let's call you. And so, like, the three HR positions, you know, we've talked about some of the struggles that the HR department, or, you know, we've communicated about some of the struggles in the HR department. We've been talking about, hey, why aren't there exit interviews? Why aren't there performance evaluations? So, this was putting more onus on and more ask from the HR department and eliminating three positions. So, I would want to know before I, you know, even get close to that, where did the number, so, where did that number come from? How did you guys come up with three?
The number came up, the number three came up, it was just an estimate, a guesstimate for discussion. When I left the board four years ago, we had three members in HR. And when I went in to have my picture taken for my badge, I saw seven names of people in HR. It seemed to me that that had really grown, and yet, I keep hearing we've cut back on administration. Commissioner Carey keeps telling, Curry keeps telling us how much we've cut back in administration. And I, I see more numbers there, I see other positions that we did not have four years ago. So, that's where that came from.
Okay, thank you. So, I would want to really dig into that before cutting HR, because we're looking at asking HR to do a better job and to do more tasks. One area that I'm interested in is the reduction of the, of the district principal, I think is Bonnie's title. I am not convinced, I was not convinced when that, when that position was established, why that was more necessary than some of the direct instruction positions. So, I, I'm asking you, Superintendent, to provide us with information about what she has done, what she's accomplished, and what, what her roles are and responsibilities are. The, the last thing I want to talk about is my concern about the overall budget and the following years. So, Nate said, hey, we're not spending a lot on BHS this year, right? This is a lot of design stuff. FY '21, FY '22, those numbers are gonna hit. And if we put stuff in now, right, so let's say the kindergarten Paris, what's really concerning to me, we put 16 kindergarten Paris, are we gonna have to pull them out the year after? I really am concerned that we're putting a lot in this budget, and then in '21, we're gonna have an 8% increase or a 10% increase. And that scares me because I'm financially, I don't know, what's the right, what's the plus? Prudent? Conservative, cheap, whatever? It worries me to put these big numbers in front of Burlington, but guess what? I've been proven wrong in the past that they're willing to put up the numbers. So, I, I don't really have a specific proposal around that. I just want to throw that out there that, and I think, yeah, you said it in, around the surplus, right? We have an extra million four in this budget this year. There's no telling how much of a surplus we have next year, plus we have additional costs. So, I just want to caution us, as we're putting stuff in place, that it may not last until '21. With that, I yield to, who's next? I lost it.
Monica?
Claire.
Claire.
Thank you. I had a couple of questions. I'm very appreciative of the district acknowledging that the elementary school staffs need full-time social workers. I commend adding those to the budget. When I look at the 2.4 for BHS, I am appreciative of that as well. I think there's need, this, the students right now, looking at schedules and, and study halls, it still exists. And I think we need to put back those FTEs, 2.4. And similar to Martine, I was happy to see in this additional document that a student activities director be a full-time one FTE. I see the numbers are up. I appreciate that, actually, I don't know if it was in the district staff, but, you know, with the, the enrollment in student activities at the high school, it's necessary. The Partnership for Change, Sally Mae, the, the PLPs, I think that's essential. I think we have a model. We're not funding it this year. I think if we were to ask what's happening in advisory, so the 1.6 acknowledging those monies that we received as a district, like I said, and I've shared with the board this year, that was a very difficult conversation to have with the, the grant provider that we weren't moving forward sustaining that, and I would appreciate that we put that back in. And I'm appreciative of learning, like Commissioner Carey talked about, the wraparound, you know, where we are, where we're going. And I am torn, because we do hear testimony from, you know, a teacher like Kara Quinn, 17 years, who have, you know, we've lacked in professional development in, in these elementary school and, and throughout the district for our teachers. And so, if the coaching model at the elementary level and middle school level is providing some sort of professional development on a consistent basis, I've heard from the, the principals that I've spoken to, it, it has benefited teachers. But I understand the same token, last night's hearing from elementary schools, basic needs that are not met in the classroom to be able to teach those students. And I know that we are struggling at the middle schools, that students are coming fully prepared on, on grade level. And so, you know, I'm happy we all agree that the elementary schools are in need of, of attention. And the only question I had, or two questions I had were, or, or that I wanted to share with the board, was an appreciation Superintendent Obang, and I shared with a majority of the board, had brought me into a meeting in December with our newly, Karen Vogel, who are, was our new data analyst position, to share the goal of that position and the current workload of that position and the need for that position. And he explained it, I don't think I need to, unless people need clarification, that we haven't had someone to own all the district data, and that it is essential, and it's also required by the AOE for our per pupilized spending to be able to give that consistent data, and that the AOE has moved to Power School, and that, you know, they're tweaking it out and all the other districts are. So, I want to recognize that position, and I want to recognize the leadership in hiring that position. that position and being prepared as we are working this course of this, into this first year of that position. So, I want to save that position because I think it's essential. And I think that was, is there another question? And though I wasn't included, I am appreciative of the work that was done and the presentation, and I'm looking to work collaboratively with everybody so that, you know, this is why this meeting exists and that why we'll have another meeting potentially next week, and that in the future, you know, instead of having this type of document presented, that we could do it together as a board, or the finance committee could take on and look at reductions once, you know, the school year is over. So, we look at September and we dedicate time so that it isn't a January, a week in January that we're discussing potential reductions after we had a year to review and see where our numbers could potentially be at, even though we know, and from Commissioner Curry's documents that she had sent, looking at the management letter from the auditor, you know, those are indicators to tell us areas of improvement or additions or reductions. So, looking at the audit, it doesn't come at a timely manner so that we can utilize it within the budget, but I just would like to be a board that takes on this conversation earlier, as always. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Well, Commissioner Avančik.
Thank you. I as well am for direct instruction, and I would like to, for us to discuss, deliberate the budget and talk about our priorities and what needs to be done in this district. I wish I could speak as eloquently about it as Commissioner Gulick, but I was miffed in the spring when we first got on about the instructional model being, interventionist model being switched to a coaching model. I don't, I don't recall any of this being part of the budgetary discussions a year So, and the two schools I'm most familiar with, the magnet schools, I know at SA, the interventionist model was working very well, and their scores were showing that they were bridging the achievement gap. Now, that model was in effect for three school years, and that's barely long enough to tell what is working and what is not. So, this coaching model, it's lovely and it's great for, particularly for new teachers to improve their teaching skills and be more effective teachers, but it is expensive, and it will take perhaps three to five years before we know if it's really working. I would like to hear from all the teachers in the district. We have 400 teachers in the district, and to this point, we've only heard from a small portion of them. I would say about maybe 10 or 15 teachers that I've gotten emails from and heard a public comment a month ago. Most of these teachers were new, second, third year of teaching, and it looked like the coaching model was working well for them, or they were getting great tips on how to improve their instruction. At last night's meeting, there were only three teachers present, all from SA, that school, and both the magnet schools, the coaching model is kind of working differently there because they had had magnet coaches, and half of that position was taken away from them. So, I'm not sure that the embedded coaching is really working at the magnet schools, but like we heard from Meg O'Connor, when her basic needs in the class aren't even met, she has nine IEP students. One is supposed to have a paraprofessional whom we haven't been able to hire. There's no way she can take advantage of a coach's tips when her basic needs are not being met. So, I think it would behoove us to go ahead and survey the teachers and see what they, an anonymous survey, I believe this request was put forth to the BEA. And then we also have three brand-new behavioral coaches in the district, and Laura Nugent herself admitted that this model is not as developed as the instructional coaches. It's costing us $250,000 per year, and not all teachers can take advantage of this. Like, the teachers, the behavioral coaches are shared, so they're at the schools for a limited amount of time, and they're there during, while the teachers are instructing their children. So, if their teachers aren't willing to let these behavioral coaches into their classroom, I'm not sure who these behavioral coaches are helping. Also, the coaches are at their schools four days a week, and one day of the week, they're at central office or somewhere else at meetings. The other items that we have listed are for middle schools, adding two guidance counselors at middle schools. So, we've learned that there's some severe bullying and behavioral issues at both the middle schools, and currently, there is no social-emotional supports at the middle schools. So, that's kind of shocking in that they're go from elementary school, where there's a lot of, hopefully, a lot of social-emotional support, to middle school with none. A lot of bullying, the adults never hear about, there's no metric. So, I think those positions are important. I believe the health ed teachers are important there, that these kids are going through changes in their body that they might not understand. My other question is, and we used to have these positions, and then back to principal of principals, what's this job? What, you know, it's costing us, I'm guessing $150,000? I get questions about this position from people that work for the district, from people at central office. And then I keep coming back to the principal sub-position. A year ago, in the budget discussion, this was advertised as a position being cut, and we're still paying someone. So, I appreciate that, the $60,000 slide, that is a question to the board. That's clarifying a little bit about those two positions, but not, not everything. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Commissioner Avančik. Commissioner Pillsbury?
Hey. More day gets to talk.
I appreciate that I talk up. First of all, I feel like I know pretty, I know a lot of the information because I've read it, I've engaged in it, et cetera. So, I don't have a lot of questions, but one way that I can make a data-informed decision about this budget is if I knew specifically caseloads of special educators and EL teachers, if I knew specifically class sizes in the elementary school by classroom, then I could make a decision as to, are we, are we meeting basic needs or not? You know, that seems to be a question. We hear stories about large class sizes of students who are, I mean, I know there's, people tell you, teachers tell us, tell me, I get emails, et cetera. I have no way of knowing. I just have to take it at face value, what the reality is. But I know that if we, we are not meeting basic needs of our students, of our teachers by making sure that all of our students who are special ed, if they're supposed to have a one-on-one and they don't, then that's an issue. If they're supposed to be helped by a behavior coach and that behavior coach isn't available all the time, that's an issue. So, I don't have specific information about class, caseloads of special educators. And I have a father that keeps telling me his daughter in our system has 48, and I don't know what, if that's real or not. So, that would be helpful. And the other thing is class sizes in each school. It seems to me that we particularly heard last night about SA, and we know that there's been an issue about the enrollment at that school for a long time, but the way we've asked our teachers there to maybe change their grade levels that they teach so frequently, especially if it's a, if they have two grade levels in one class, it seems to be particularly not a very enlightened way of managing that school. And I think we need to look at better management of SA. And this proposal is trying to give them a full-time magnet coach to help them with the theme of environmental sustainability and peace and justice, and all of the themes that Sustainability Academy should be looking on to kind of attract or recruit more families throughout the district, maybe to improve that enrollment at that school. I guess the question I have is, does this district still favor magnet schools? If we do, then we need to put effort into recruiting and making those magnet schools strong. If we don't, then we should be honest and right up front and say that. It looks like by taking away services from the Sustainability Academy that we're not supporting that school. The thing that I wanted to talk about was the, the coaches. I, you know, I heard the presentation in the last board, and I said, oh, yeah, that sounds like a great, that is probably a good, good idea. Then last night, I heard, again, I was almost convinced, and then I realized, then I realized that as a teacher myself, I admit, I'm a teacher, I'm proud of it, and I was in a school system where teachers shared, they shared a lot of information, skills, and strategies. They were, we were allowed to meet every other week together at a grade level, and there were five of us, fifth-grade teachers, we met every other weekend, and we knew what the assessments were, we knew, and we just shared our information. It sounds like that our teachers aren't given enough time to meet in groups to be able to do that. That's a very valuable thing, to share information, to share strategies, to help each other with different curriculums. That collegiality is important. And then I look at what we've done. We've had, we've had a big exodus of teachers, or changing of teachers, or whatever. That doesn't create collegiality in a school, and especially if you, if we have a change in administration constantly, that does not create collaboration and collegiality in a school, which brings about making teachers much better because they're more honest and are able to work with each other. Mentoring is another thing that helps new teachers be able to feel comfortable and not feel alone and be able to have the help. Now, the thing that I, I kind of caught last night when they were talking about, that our teachers need help in learning, writers' workshops, setting up writers' workshop, readers' workshop, responsive classroom, they didn't mention differentiation, but I, I'm surprised they didn't. Now, I'm an old man. I've been out of teaching for 10 years, but 20 years ago, we were doing that in our system. And so, it seems like those skills, if they're not coming to us with those skills, then we have an issue about in our hiring process. Are we looking at their resumes? Are we looking at the courses they took?
Five minutes, Keith.
So, I think there's an answer to the coach, and it may be better hiring of teachers.
Thank you, Commissioner Pillsbury.
That was too quick.
That was five minutes. Five twenty-seven. God. I know, it goes fast. Commissioner Walz.
I, when I first read this proposal, one of the main things I thought about was how, and hearing more about the history and being brand-new to this, I feel like there has not been enough consistency and the continuity of what we're kind of asking as far as, like, one year it's coaches, one year it's interventionists, one year it's, you know, maybe it's gonna be mentors now. I think that's probably a really hard way to do any planning and to actually grow, not just as a staff person, but then actually within what the kids are learning. We talk about how we want to have certain things happen in both middle schools because both of these middle schools are then gonna end up at the high school. It seems like, just like Mike was talking about, you can't fund one thing without thinking about what next year might bring as far as the budget and trying to plan out things financially, and those things are attached to different ways we want to educate the kids or their educational experience. I think that, you know, talking more about a strategic plan and actually working or in making a commitment, and over and over I'm hearing, well, we don't know if the coaching thing is gonna work because it hasn't been around long enough. And it seems kind of crazy that, it seems like there's, there's several things that we're saying, well, we don't really know yet because it hasn't been around long enough. So, I feel like we're pulling a lot of parachute lines instead of trying to plan for the future mindfully. And there's, and I have a couple of questions. Speaking of the person that, obviously, I also agree that this should be driven by data. I think that's a fantastic way to make a responsible decision and do it in an unbiased way. I am concerned that we might be getting all of this wonderful information and it not necessarily be able to be analyzed, or, I don't know, I'm thinking, we need that information to make some of these decisions. It's not quite happening yet, but that, I think, is gonna be essential to decisions that we make in the future. And the idea of getting rid of Rust, getting rid of our communications person seems really counterproductive, too. That is yet another thing, you know, like, oh, we're gonna try this for a year and then see how it goes. I really think we should stick with Rust's position because talking more about being transparent with the community, actually understanding these things, the more we're educating our community, the more we're gonna get the kind of feedback that we need as far as guidance. So, having an updated website is essential. Is this data person, what's the new thing? Power School? What's it called? Power School? Is that person going to man this Power School updating all of that information? It's great to have it, but if you can't get it out there to the community, it's kind of ineffective. And I'm also really concerned about HR, just considering the recent events and just how much has been going on with staffing. I'm just gonna say that nicely with staffing. I can't imagine that we wouldn't be way more vulnerable to things like expensive lawsuits, and there needs to be some people in charge of better hiring practices and exit interviews, and, you know, so I'm just gonna echo that, and, I don't know, do I have two minutes I should give to somebody?
You got one minute.
Okay. Nate, do you think that municipality thing was the water bill by any chance? Because I know a lot of times we're worried about, oh, there's a new utility coming down the, this is.
She's talking about city council.
Yeah.
I mean, this was just a matter of.
Oh, no, that was the side conversation with one of the city folks.
You mean, what they might propose in the March?
Yeah. The thing, the unforeseen utility thing or something you mentioned.
That already was on the, that was passed.
Yeah, that was passed.
It was on the memorial.
Oh, you, you.
The increase in their, they're gonna ask for.
Said there might be a municipal tax rate increase.
Oh, municipal taxing. No, that's not for utilities, that wouldn't be for water or anything like that. That's just like their general operating budget. Water, stormwater is a separate enterprise fund of the city, so that's a separate, separate process.
So, it's not, it's something in addition to that.
Again, I don't know this definitively. It's just that that's the signals that I've heard from the city was like, FYI, you will probably, the city will probably come forward with municipal tax rate increase, so the rate that they charge on property in the city will go up.
Gotcha. Thank you. And then, and the advisory thing. Claire is right. The advisory thing needs to come back.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Walz. Commissioner Allwell.
For me, you know, I was perfectly part of this because I wasn't here. I was in New Hampshire all weekend babysitting, but I, I have to say, first of all, for the cuts on this list, if we had had the data I have been asking for since September, maybe those cuts would have been different, but we don't have data. We don't know what the other, I mean, you've given me some of that data, but I haven't gotten, for instance, any data on the individual schools and the, the number of kids in each classroom and all of that that I have been asking for now for two months, and I finally got sent back to Nikki who is out. And I started with her, and she told me she didn't have it. So, it's not that when those cut list was being put together, it was what we knew of, it had nothing to do with the people and the amount of work, because I think all of those people, that thing, are very hard workers. It's not that we have critique on their work. It is that we were looking for somewhere to cut that was not children sitting, someone working with children. So, I, I mean, that's the first thing that I really would like more data, and the data that I've been asking for since September. And I think that we also need to look at. And I think that we also need to look at the strategic plan, one of my favorite subjects, because I don't think it is flushed out. And we also need the budget in front of us with as much information as we can get, because I've been on boards before, and, on, on school board before, and I know there are pockets of savings in every school budget. And, and so, if you don't know those, then you go to people instead of the pockets of savings. So, I know this is not an easy discussion here, and, you know, if we can find other ways of saving it without cutting these positions, that's fine with, well, certainly for me, it's fine, you know, for some of them. I just, I guess, I'm, I'm critical of the, of not having the information I think I need in order to make these decisions. And that's the root of my problem with any of doing this, is that if we were fully informed, it would be far easier to sit down and make those, because I don't think we're that far off in what we wanted to fund with the district. It's just, where are we gonna get that money? And I have to say that we have cut, and we have cut, and we have cut. And even though I know you're still saying only one counselor, guidance counselor at the middle schools, by God, I left the middle schools three and a half years ago, and they both had two point something guidance counselors there. We have so much problems at both those middle schools that we really need more adults working directly with those kids, counseling them, guiding them, social workers, and I know we have tried, and I know there isn't enough money there to do it, but at least two guidance counselors at each of those schools is what I think is necessary, having worked for 25 years in one of them. And I'm finished.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Allwell. Who's next?
Barlow.
Uh, Barlow.
This last. Yeah. Me?
I guess I just lost my mind. Let's just go with Barlow.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna start my five minutes by giving a shout-out to Mr. Russ Alex, because I couldn't imagine losing our communication director. I don't know if the, the cut that's being suggested was arbitrary, or it just seemed unnecessary, but having lived my first two years on the board, we got the crap kicked out of us on a regular basis because of the, the way we communicated, and, you know, first with Eric Wells and now with Russ, we've been able to remedy that problem. We get a lot better feedback from the community generally that we're, you know, quote-unquote more transparent and more forthcoming with information, and we couldn't do that without our communications person. I don't believe we could. It would fall to Yao or somebody else who's already sort of maxed out. So, I hope, I hope we, we don't, we don't go that route. I'll also say that I'm, I'm, I'm hopeful that we'll be able to provide some level of support for the K-Peers, I think that that's been necessary. You know, this is, this is the time of the year when, I always say, there's never enough money, you know, and, and two or three years ago, when we, I think we lost grant funding for the K-Peers, and that's why we had to, we had to get our, we were, we were struggling with some other real, real financial challenges at the time, and it's one of those least worst decisions, but I'm glad we can revisit it and provide some level of support there. And I'm glad we're not doing all sixteen, even if we could, for the reasons Commissioner Fisher alluded to, is we got, we have potentially a lot of debt service coming online in a couple of years. So, I think to do it gradually and try to get to some level that meets the need, but doesn't maybe fully fund it, is where the whole thing sugars off, but I'm glad we're doing that. I'm also, I'm glad we're adding additional instruction at BHS. I think we definitely, adding 2.4, I think, if that's what we're adding, and that, that's awesome, and I do concur with Commissioner Wick, that in a modern United States high school, we should have some basic computer programming instruction somehow. And that's sort of parenthetic, 'cause I'm not telling the administration how to, how to necessarily spend that money, but that's something that I would certainly like to see. I also think we have to, you know, this is a process, and, you know, I, I was the one, I've been ranting to our leadership team that, I, I didn't like what happened and the way we were informed about the work that the group of five commissioners did on their own, although I appreciate the intent, and I think that, you know, obviously, we're, we're all doing this for free and we all care deeply about the system, it's just, it's not a good way for us to operate as a board. We need to, what would've been better, in my view, would be for, to have some people brainstorm and bring some ideas, and then we could collectively develop a, a new straw, you know, budget or something, but to have some fully distilled product just presented to us that was done without the knowledge of a majority of the board, it just didn't feel good. It felt factional to me, and I respect and, you know, honor your service in, as educators, many of you, and, but, and some, and those of us that aren't, you know, we don't have the subject matter expertise that you had in your careers, but it's just not the way we should be developing budgets, in my view. I think we need to work collaboratively as a group, I think we all come from different places, and if we all, as a whole entire group, work together and exchange ideas, we're gonna come up with better solutions than having these things sort of pre-distilled and then say, "Oh, here's a thing, what do you think about it?" You know? So, I just, you know, I'm, I'm sort of over it now, but I'm hoping that going forward, and I won't be around for much longer, but I'm hoping that we'll collaborate more and have you less factional. It's felt factional this past year a little bit, and I'm hoping that that doesn't take root too much. And lastly, I'd like to say that I think we really need to respect and give weight to the work that our administration does on all this. You know, Yao and his staff, you know, at, at the district level, at the building level, this has been a, a real sort of involved process of trying to distill all these ideas and try to figure out how we can, you know, fund this public education system in Burlington without enough money, okay? And, and there's been a lot of work that's gone into it. So, as we deliberate what things to keep and what things to do and how many years to do them and things, I think we have to be really intentional about it, and we have to give a lot of weight to the work that, that our district experts have put into this. And the last thing I said, someone, someone said something about so, or a couple of people said something about social emotional supports at the middle schools, and I do believe we do need that, and I was wondering if I could ask, have you, there are, there is some money in the budget for that this year, right?
Yeah.
I mean, I, I don't know, I forget what particular line item, but I can't remember if it's this year or last year, there's a social worker out and there's some guidance counseling, things, but I think that that's also necessary.
Thank you, Commissioner Barlow. Commissioner Wick.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Fisher. All right, so Commissioner Curry asked earlier on, okay, so we're talking for five minutes, we're asking questions, what, what next? That was a great question, thank you. I would suggest, or it would be my hope, that what's next, this is, I think, important work that we're doing right now, to give the superintendent and Nathan some feedback. This may be the first time we've had an opportunity to do this in this budget season. We'll learn from our, you know, mistakes, next year we'll start this earlier, I suspect. And so, I would hope that what happens next is that the superintendent and Nathan take under advisement everything we've said, and then kind of, you know, sharpen the pencils, get them out and consider some tweaks to what you've got up there now, which would obviously necessitate at least one more meeting, and I personally would be in favor of more than one meeting, because I really believe this is an iterative process, and that we're getting closer and closer and we're narrowing, but it may take a few more iterations, and then I do believe that we can all get on, if not exactly the same page, very close to it. Because I, I wanna thank you, Yao, for doing the work you've done and your team, Nathan, it's been very good work, it's been excellent. I'm personally very pleased with the way you've done it and the detail, and everything's come through great. I also wanna thank Keith, Monica, Stephen, Martine, and Kathy, because even though, let's say, they, they did it outside the framework of maybe what some were expecting, I, I think it, it represents that they really care and that they were feeling a need to express themselves, and that's ultimately what each of us is here, is an elected official representing a constituency and having some personal feelings about what a budget should contain. So, I'm very thankful, and I don't actually think it was intended to be a fait accompli. I think it was intended to propose something to the group, just as we're doing, to then deliberate upon. So, I'm, I'm grateful to everyone, and so I think we're, we're all doing a good a job we can, and there's always room for improvement. The next thing I'd like to say is, quick before I forget, a couple of items that do mean a lot to me, not just because it's my personal quirk, but it's because it's my observation that the cost of these items, the investment in these items will be, will reap rewards far beyond their minor cost. I didn't see in this iteration of the buzz, budget, the $19,000 line item to add those two BHS sports, $19,000 to add the ultimate frisbee as a varsity sport and bowling. I think they're inclusive sports, and I think it's worth it. So, I'll just make that plug, and then also, I can only speak to Edmunds, but I do know, I didn't see the addition of the middle school banned paraeducator for $30,000. I am going to suggest that I feel very strongly, again, not just 'cause it's a personal quirk, but because I have a direct observation of the need for that. So, I would ask you to, in your next iteration, perhaps bring back those very low dollar amount items, which will have a large impact, a lot of leverage. Beyond that, directionally, I am very sympathetic and in favor of direct instruction, the additions such as the SA and Flynn item, keeping those positions which we haven't even hired yet, as I understand it, at some point I'd like an update. Also, with the classroom teacher addition to SA and the interventionist, so just directionally, my bias is towards direct instruction, and because we have limited dollars, we do have to make some trade-offs. So, one thing I would ask the superintendent and his team to do is, as hard as it is, look a little harder at these, the question, and perhaps look comparability, does a school district of our size, and do other school districts of our size, perhaps in the region, maybe just look at Chittenden County, have a district principal? Do they have a communications position? Do they have an HR department that's the size of our HR department? Do they have the number of what's been labeled adjunct administrators or formal, former principals who remain on the payroll? If they have all these, it's an indicator that we, too, may need them. If they don't, then at least it should make you kind of think a little harder as to why do we, and maybe there are still good reasons, but I'd ask you to really think a little harder if there is a way to reconfigure things to remain effective in the central office.
Five minutes.
So, what I'd say is, just in conclusion, I, I thank you, and that's, that's all I have to say, my time's up.
Thank you, Commissioner Wick. Representative Gentman, thank you for your patience.
I was curious if somebody could just, I didn't quite understand the role of an equity coach. I don't know who wants to speak to that, but I, anyway.
I could speak to it. So, we had an equity instructional leader, I actually don't call it a coach, an instructional leader, a year and a half ago, I guess it was, and that person moved on. We've not yet had an opportunity to rehire for that person. I know when I came on to the district, the district, and Liz can probably have more memory of this, there was a, an OCR human rights order that this district needed to have an equity person to do the work, right? But I also support that. I think there are a lot of instructional pieces that we need to give support to.
So, at the moment, we, sorry, I, we do-
We have one.
We don't have one.
We don't have one. So, how is that a reduction?
I didn't put that on.
The money is in the budget for that, so.
That was my one, clarifying on that one. Student activities slash athletic director, would that be one combined 1.0 role, or would that be two, do you see that as two different positions, or, I, I know you don't necessarily talk like individual personnel when we're doing budgeting, but when you were imagining this role, do you see that as, as the same individual, or do you see that as multiple positions?
Well, so I see that position morphing as a .6 to a 1.
Yep, and then that includes-
And they would have to be, they would have to be a, you know, process.
Just because, so something, I think that's actually a fairly good idea, knowing the state of extracurriculars in the high school, just to be cognizant with the athletic director role, student activities, those can be very different, and I think oftentimes the students that don't participate in extracurriculars are those students that aren't necessarily gonna be tied to athletics, so just something to be mindful of.
But one person could potentially do the work of both of those.
Yeah, so, fair point. Moving on, a question I had about the communication position, what do the people who created this final draft see as a replacement, or what do you see as communications if there weren't this position? I guess anybody can speak to that.
Well, I, I know that it's a relatively new position, and that's kind of what we were looking for, how the district has changed in terms of new things that have been added. So, that's why it's on there. I mean, I, I love Russ, I, I, you know, I don't want him to go either, and there's certainly been a lot that he's done regarding the high school, you know, plan, it's been unbelievable what he's done, but, but it came from that impetus of looking for things that were new, that were not here just a few years ago.
Yep.
And that's, that was the answer, I guess.
So, something to me, just back at that original board meeting, when we created committees, something that I thought, a takeaway for me from that meeting was that we need to make sure that the role of committees in our policy governance system, it would be used to aid central office and the superintendent and not supersede or replace their roles. So, I think that that is important to keep in mind when we're talking about communications, for instance, we have a communications committee, but that, when we created that committee, it was to aid the communications that our district has, so just kind of seeing that overlap. I don't know, how much time do I have?
Minute, or then a minute?
Wonderful. Language is something that I haven't seen in either of these, and it's something that I think is really important, because as Martine said, we, we stress kind of like cultural diversity in our school district, which we have, but we don't necessarily teach it. And so, I, I don't know how we fit that in, because again, like, we're always trying to find money somewhere. But considering the cuts that I've seen over my time in the district in language, it used to be a requirement in the middle school, and now it's optional classes, like, hard to get into. It seems like that's something important, maybe not this year, but at some point in our future, to kind of reintroduce that. And lastly, I wanted to just second Mike's concern about the money and the issues we're going to have down the road with some of the expenditure, and I also wanted to ask off of that, you had mentioned one of the previous budget meetings, some influx that you thought we would see, or not influx, but kind of balancing of that, and I was wondering if you could just speak to that.
Specialized.
Yeah.
Yeah, Nathan can probably describe it best, it's the new legislation that will change the way we, the amount and the way we get funding, the block grant.
I don't know if there's something specific you wanna know, but the, the state currently operates on an approach that's largely reimbursement-based, so our special educators, our paraeducators need to do time reports that say how much they're working with students on IEPs, and then based on that percentage, we get to claim that, that percentage of their salary, and then we get a certain level of reimbursements, typically like 56 cents on the dollar, so to speak, from the state. And the state's talking about moving to more of a block grant approach, where they just say, "Based on the number of students you have, you're gonna get this much money." It would eliminate kind of the need for a lot of that record-keeping and, and time stuff, it would provide potentially more flexibility, but there's concern that it might result in a lower amount of total resources.
And it also allows that money to be spent on people with EL needs and 504 needs that are currently not included in special funding now. So it will actually provide more resources, less admin, and more flexibility. So I think it's great that you brought that up.
You have two more.
Act 173.
Take your time back.
Act 173.
So I was just going to say, I'll take a minute if you've got your two, if you want to give one away.
Well, no, sorry. I just, so maybe I missed it in a meeting, I missed it, but I think that whether we think that, like, there's that, and there's kind of two sides to that with expenditure. And so I think that that is something that I personally would like to hear more about as we draft a budget, because that seems important to me. Because it is, as we've seen in the past, it's tough when we kind of like oversell and then we end up with positions that we can't maintain later on, because they're a lot harder to remove than they are to add. And so that seems important to me as we finalize our budget to understand that more.
Any time left? Can I piggy, are you done?
Yeah.
Sorry, can I piggyback on his question? There's talk of a statewide teachers' contract. That could also have an impact on our, you know, future expenditures, I would believe. Any knowledge on that? No? Okay.
Is it healthcare or every...
Health, yes. No, I mean, one of the things that I heard when they talk about a statewide teachers' contract, for example, is that each district will have to have fewer attorneys working on their budget process and things like that. So there's just going to be a lot of...
Yeah, well, I guess they're just assuming that economy of size will...
Right.
You'll need less, right?
Right.
So that's theoretically that they're thinking that way. So, yeah, I guess theoretically you'd have one group doing the negotiations, so you wouldn't have multiple lawyers doing it, right?
Right, right, right.
That wouldn't be huge savings for us, though.
All right.
That would or would not?
It would.
Wouldn't be. Not just the reduction in legal expenses associated with negotiations. That in and of itself wouldn't be.
Okay. Thanks.
Good. Thank you. All right, so we're going back down the list, three minutes each.
Can I get a, I don't know...
Yes, you can.
Can you get?
Five or...
Yes.
Twenty seconds. Five minutes.
And Nathan?
Five minutes? All right, exit, five minutes. All right, so this is my precious five minutes. So first of all, let me, I want to thank everyone, actually, for engaging in this comment. I've been saying we need to have more crucial conversations and I think we have to engineer a way to have those types of conversations. I'm going to talk a little bit more about process than actually the items there. I was sad to see that there was a group that had to go outside and do that, because I think we really do need to figure out how do we ask the hard questions and not personalize it, because I don't, around, you know, what we think we need to do. And I think that will help the board in truly define what is your work? Because I think we're still working on that. What is your work? You know, where are the decisions made and where are the things you're going to leave to staff to do? And how do we get there? And what's your comfort level? And really defining around what the values. We have a mission and vision and I started with all that stuff in terms of when we started this budget process, but this group hasn't really sat down many times to really talk about it and get a sense of, okay, I know what this person feels, I know how we feel, and this is what we're going to do as we move into the budget process. So I hope that, I understand the need from that group. I hope we can find a way that we can engage in conversation so we can move things forward. Because I really do think that the volunteers around the table are here because they want to do good work, right? So why would they want to make it more difficult? Why not find a way? And I keep thinking, I'm going, you know, I've managed budgets 10 times the size of this, right? And I'm like, why is this so difficult? Like, this is only like, not even, you know, it's only, not even $100 million, right? But, right? But I think because it gets so close to this fear of everyone's sort of contact and we have members on the board that are very connected to the people around us. So you want to see some positive products. So it raises the stakes. And so I think we do have to find a process to kind of really have that conversation. One of the things I want to say is, education is changing. It's not the same as it was five years ago, 10 years ago, 15 years ago, 20 years ago. It's not. It's not the same when I was a teacher in the classroom. It's changed. It's not, it's not the same, it's changing, right? And also the structures around it changes, even the operational pieces. I've seen changes even since I've been here in terms of the structural pieces in Vermont and in Burlington. And the state right now is looking at imposing more changes on to us, right, in terms of doing that. So we have to kind of recognize that, that things are evolving and things are changing and we have to be prepared to change. It's hard for humans to do that, but that's what it's all about. A couple of comments around some of the things, I'm not going to go into, because there's just overwhelming comments here and I wish I could speak to everybody's comments, but I know I can't, but I want to kind of provide some. One of the things I would say is, one, I have a bias towards instruction. I'm a teacher, I'm an instructional, I like to think of myself as an instructional leader. So everything we're doing is around achieving and it's around instruction. So don't lose that in thinking, well, I'm for instruction, doesn't mean the person next to you is not. Right, we're all here around the same things. And we have to find language to kind of help each other get to where we need to get to. I am saddened, though, that we've had this conversation around some personnel, some staff, and we've had to call people out. I feel for Russ, he's the one that's here, but there are other names, other people, and you know, we're talking here, it's out there in the system, right? People hear that, you know, you're talking about this principal or that principal and it gets, and it gets out there. And it's unfortunate that that happens and I hope we can find a way to have those conversations together in a way that it can be based on what our priorities are and what we really want to achieve. And then I think if we have that in mind, we can work to get there. I think, I really do think we can. I really do, I'm an optimist, but I really do believe. Number of comments around staffing at high school and things like that. One of the things we switched to a couple of, I mean, a couple of years ago was around student needs. So the, when we give, hopefully when we approve the budget and we give the school additional staffing, we're going to ask the school to say, ask the students what they want and then provide those programs. So it's not going to be all whatever the principal wants or what I want. We want to hear from the students in terms of what they, what they need. And if there's, if there's a, there's four kids that want this and we have 25 kids that want this, we're going to do the 25 with what resources we have, right, in terms of doing that. The other piece I always talk about is the HR analysis. I kind of talked a little bit about it at the last meeting in terms of, one of the things I've been engaging in is working with, starting to do some analysis and work with a consulting group around our HR department and operations overall with Nate's department and stuff. There does need to be some analysis around that in terms of, and that's, that's nothing new. That's been there for a number of years, but we're just now to the stage that I think we can take some time to actually do that. So I'm hoping that the board understands that that's in works. And I don't want to make changes until we've done that analysis, really figure out what's working well, what's not working, what do we need from experts in the HR area and others? And then we can say, oh, guess what? Yeah, we can reduce it by one or we need additional staffing in this area in order to move the enterprise in the right direction. I think that is the right approach, to do a good analysis and have people who've done other organizations to say, this is what your organization should do and move that forward. So those are a few comments and then my time is up. So that's my reaction.
And you got some more time later. Yeah. All right. Commissioner Wick, three minutes?
Yeah, was Nathan going to speak or no?
Oh, yeah.
Not at this time.
Okay, fair enough.
Bonnie, one five minutes?
Oh, no, I'm good, thanks.
Okay.
Okay, so we're into the three-minute round?
Reversal or...
Speed round.
Wait till the 30-second.
I just wanted to comment briefly on, I'm so glad we passed the BHS bond. It's something that is long overdue and it's something that was overwhelmingly supported by the community, as we all know. And it's something that's really expensive. And, but I personally am supportive of it and I think our community is, but I'm not supportive of it if it means when the debt service starts kicking in, we're going to have to start firing teachers or special educators or paras. I supported it because, and I think our community supported it, because they're ready to take that, to bite the bullet, if you will. And so I guess I'm a little concerned, because one of my fears at the outset was, we'll have this great school, but all of a sudden we'll have to start cutting FTEs dramatically. But I don't think that's a good trade. If that's the case, then I'd rather stick with our current high school to some degree. So I'm personally, and I can only speak for myself, each of us may be a taxpayer in Burlington, I don't think we should, we should cut too deeply into the bench because of the high school. I think we, as a community, have decided we need this high school and we want to serve the kids. So if we need to build up our, our direct instruction, our supports, whatever it is, I'm going to vote for that budget and I know it's going to be painful and I know it may be above 5%. We're having the luxury this year of maybe passing a 4% budget, but no, it's not going to be like that. Beginning in about 2022 through 20, well, I don't know, for a while, we may be asking the taxpayers, I don't know if we'll be on this board then, but it is my hope that for the children's sake, we'll be asking the taxpayers for a big ask for a number of years. And so I, I respect everybody's, where they are on the financials, conservative or spectrum. I totally respect it. Everyone can vote their own way. But I just want to make my position known that I didn't vote for the high school so that we could just make dramatic cuts later. It wasn't supposed to be a crowding out, in my, in my view. Thanks, that's all I wanted to say.
Could I take 20 seconds?
Yeah.
Kind of a response is, I'm not looking to cut. My thought was, what should we be concerned about adding that we can't sustain?
Understood. Thank you, yeah.
Minus your three minutes, right? Is it my turn again?
Yes.
Yes, Commissioner Barlow.
So just to follow on, because we're sort of just riffing on each other a little bit here.
It wasn't intentional.
Well, no, but it's a valid point. And I think that, I think that, I agree with you that we can't undercut programming and services to pay for a big shiny building. But I think it's going to definitely, just like if you went and you, you remodeled your house, it might, it might put a crimp into some of your other discretionary spending. So I think we just have to be mindful of it going forward and not overspend, like Commissioner Fisher said, in ways, or not overspend or put ourselves at risk of adding things that we then have to remove. So I think it's just going to be, it's going to be, add some more delicacy to the, to the budgeting process for a few years until we get into sort of a steady state. I was interested, it was, I think Martine said something about the statewide healthcare contract next year. Isn't there, even though there's not a lot of money in the negotiations part, that you can contribute to healthcare, how about the ongoing, just like the, like the flexible spending and all the other stuff that we had to deal with this year? If all of that gets like pushed back to the state, there's probably some savings there that we can have in a couple of years. Is that true, Nathan? Or is that, am I overstepping?
No, I mean, I think, I think, so there's going to be a statewide negotiation on health benefits for all school employees. We don't know the outcome of that negotiation. So if that, if the outcome of that negotiation is a benefit that's more generous than we currently provide, then our costs will be higher than they otherwise would be. And if it's less generous, they'll be lower. We don't know the outcome of that negotiation, but...
But the administrative costs, it depends on, we may still bear...
We, at this point, the negotiations by law are supposed to be around the, what the benefit is. We would still expect to have to administer it at the local level.
And the last thing I'll say, as I mentioned to Liz, is like, this feels like a restorative budget circle. And there's, it's probably, there's some, it's, there's some goodness in this format, I would suggest.
Exit.
I'm done.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Barlow. Commissioner Olah.
Hi. I really don't have any more questions or any, you know, if someone wants my time, please go at it. I, you know, I feel like we, I mean, I don't like budget season because of all of this and it, and, and I know the needs and I know that we can never meet them. So it is what it is and we go through this dance every year and it's painful and, but it's part of being a school board member, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Walz.
One thing that it seems like we all agree upon, which is a positive thing, is the restorative practices. So I'm glad that everybody agrees that that should get funded and it might even be less than we thought. And the other thing is, I will give away some of my time, as long as it's not for an interpretive dance. But I, yeah, I just want to, I just want to once again talk about continuity. I feel like when our teachers have stability, I think that's going to trickle down to the students and they're going to be able to have a better plan about the building blocks, about the continuity in education. And I think, I just think all, all around, working more on a strategic plan and having a three to five-year thing, that's both about money and about systems, curriculum is important.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Pillsbury.
I don't really have much to say, except I hope next year that we have a finance committee that will start these discussions earlier in the fall, so that information can be gotten and the whole board can be involved. I think, I would, when you spend $87 million, you should spend more time in a couple, a couple of hours, a couple of minutes, a couple of meetings. I think, I think it is a community plan, it's a school board, I think that the budget is a plan that the community, the district representatives intends to implement to improve the learning of our children. And that's what I think we need to think about, that's why budgets are hard, but also it's, I think it's important, it's a community plan to educate our children.
Thank you, Commissioner Pillsbury. Commissioner Vajic.
So I want to thank Nate and Yao for, you know, their presentation, but I also want to thank Keith and Stephen and Martine and those people that dedicated their time to look closely at the budget and the numbers that we know. We, I guess we're not familiar with all the budgets and we don't mean to leave other commissioners out. I think I found this discussion this evening a lot more productive. There was a lot more to talk about having this document in front of our eyes. You know, before I was sworn in as a commissioner, I've come to several of these meetings. A year ago, I closely followed the budget process and I'm coming to wonder, are these really board meetings? Because they were led by Superintendent Obeg and his staff. All the presentations, all the slideshows that we see are made by BSD staff. And so if we're truly a board, and these are truly board meetings that the board should be leading, shouldn't we as a board be presenting some of the slideshows? And so we've had some resolutions and those have been coming straight from the board. We've had some committee reports and those have been coming from the board. So I see a little bit of a change and I just wanted to share my point of view when some people give us a hard time for a meeting outside of the 12 of us. Ideally, it would be always the 12 of us, but at least this gives a point of conversation and debate. And I also agree that we should be working on a three to five-year budget plan, not just go year, from year to year to year. You know, some of these numbers here I know can be tweaked. We're adding the magnet coaches back in, but a half, they're already paid for, half of their positions, so. And then another question is, do we really need the full 16 kindergarten paras? I do know a para who's worked two years in kindergarten and now is in second grade and this person is assigned to a student, however, they always help out the entire class. I mean, they're with the student, making sure the student's doing fine, but they can't help but help the entire class, the teacher. And so, you know, in some of the kindergarten classes, they might have a student that needs a one-on-one para... para, but that adult is also sometimes shared. So perhaps we're okay with the nine paras in kindergarten classes, but I do think that we need two adults for 22 five-year-olds. And then, okay, I just, you know, we're talking, now, we're not talking about people personally, we're talking about their positions, like principal of principals. Is that really needed?
Can I get, sorry, stop using that. It's very offensive to the principal, to principal principal. I'll talk some about later why, but-
What is the title, what is her title?
District lead principal.
District lead principal.
Oh, okay. I apologize, I didn't know that was.
Chair Wall.
Thank you. First, I do want to thank Nathan and Yao. And I know Kathy, you've struggled with information from the district. And I know I had an informative conversation with Victor. And I don't think, you know, again, Nathan, specifically about the, the coaching chart, you know, that changes the narrative dramatically when, you know, board members are able to see of the number of coaches, 740,000 are grant-funded positions. You know, we wouldn't know that information unless you took the time to put it together. And it's incredibly valuable. And we thank you for that. So more information like that, dissemination of information like that helps us do our job and it actually makes up for a positive climate. I think, you know, Superintendent Bang, you've heard tonight and seen, and we've talked over the last three days, you know, an analysis of different positions to be able to share, you know, what, what people are hired for under your leadership, specifically at the central office, if it's, if it's adjunct retiree positions, whether it's for principal subs or security or safety officer, like just empowering us with the knowledge of what that, that those responsibilities are. And you said that you would, you would absolutely put that forth, so we see job descriptions and, and salary components attached, so that we don't have to guess. And then I agree, you know, again, I just wanted to, it's not dicker, but say with the BHS model, you know, building this new school, and this will be a full-time commitment for the next many years. And I'm all in as a volunteer to, to lead this with the many commissioners as well as district leaders. But, you know, when we add more staff, we're adding because we are, we are in need of more staff at that school. And we're going to build a school and we need to have, you know, whether it's a computer or business department, or, you know, using that advisory time effectively. Like we are, we have teachers who are given us a block of time to teach and, you know, we're not utilizing that advisory period at all, in my mind, this year because of that lack of funding. But we also need a strong guidance department. And we need to guide. I know students can choose what they want, but guidance is huge in that high school. And I think we need to spend some time this year, when we look at the budget and we think about monies that have been spent supporting departments, whether it's HR or guidance or behavioral coaches that, you know, staff does not see the, the support that it needs from those departments, or you might see, or students. And so, you know, focusing on that so that we are utilizing, you know, the best resources and, and money that we have to use the limited time. That's it. I'm at three minutes. Thanks.
Thank you, Chair Wall. Whoa, put me on the clock. So I wanted to thank the working group, or whatever we're calling you guys. Thank you for putting forward reductions. So I haven't heard that in prior budget discussions. And I think it's really good to look at the efficacy of our current programs and positions. So thank you for, for bringing that to a head. One detailed question I had is, there are two, in, in this document, there are two FTE middle school ban paras. But here, there's one. Is there, was there a thought process to that?
Equity.
Commissioner Wex spoke to that, that both schools would have.
Oh, both schools. Gotcha. Thank you.
Can we say, it's not equity. Equity means giving the needs. You're talking about equality. You're giving everyone the same. This recommendation came because there was a specific need at a specific school because of the cohort there. That need is not the same at the other schools. So that's why, if the principals would have said, oh, there's a need there as well, then they would have said, right, so that's not equity, because if, if I don't need, you know, it's equality. So that's what you're talking about. If you're using the equality models, everyone's going to get one, then that's different, right? But equity, we got to, we got to measure. Somebody might get a .75, somebody might get a five, you know, in terms of doing that.
Thank you.
I have a problem always with what, because equity and equality-
So I'm sorry, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hold you, because I got some other stuff to say. Like I support the kindergarten paras. I think, I mean, I remember when they got cut in the years past, and if we could put some in, right, you put like-
Nine.
Nine, right? That sends a huge message. And I totally agree, the earlier we put the money in, the bigger the benefit. I think we all see a lot of nods, right? And then the last, the last thing, when, when we're looking to cut, and we're all looking to cut the non-instructional positions, right? It's just an instinct that we have. Put the resources in the classroom. I want to caution against, we didn't used to do this as a rationale for cutting. We do need to provide those basic instructional services and the classroom is important. But like, like Yao said, education is changing. The world, the environment in which we operate is changing. So I'm thinking like the data position. I'm an IT guy. I see the explosion of data and I see how data is used. And if we can't figure out what's going on and we can't speak to the data, we can't use the data to speak what's going on, we're in deep trouble. Because then it's all stories and stories change, right? You can, you can tweak data and everything, but the data is really important for us to explain to people outside, who are not sitting here at night, at 10 o'clock at night, or not living in the district. And it's important for the state, the state, the government, the federal, they're all asking for data. And I've been part of an organization that didn't do data right and it was so messy. So I'm, I'm in support of that position and I'm in support of doing, putting the money outside the classroom where it makes sense as, like you said, what did you say? Education is changing, right? It changes every year. That's my rant. Commissioner Gulick.
Thank you. This does feel like a restorative circle, so in that vein.
We can take some money off.
But yeah, I just, I know you're around for a few more months, Mark, but I am going to miss you on the board. And I hope we can still get bagels and coffee in, in our neighborhood. I also wanted to give a shout out to Isaac, who got into the college of his dreams early, which is amazing. Congratulations.
Which one?
Where are you going?
Brown University, sorry.
Woo, nice.
I don't mean to embarrass you.
The system is working.
Pretty awesome, pretty awesome.
That's my college of my dreams.
So congrats. And also a shout out to Russ, because Russ does good work, great work. And he was hugely helpful in the passing of the BHS bond, which was much appreciated. So again, you know, it's really tough decisions to make and I hope we can find a way to keep Russ and his position, because it's really great and important work. A couple of other things I wanted to say, I want us to keep asking, why can't we fund everything we want? I'm sorry, why can't we fund the rainbows and the unicorns? Well, I've worked in four districts in the state and this particular district seems to be the, the most cash-strapped, if you will. And I want to know why. And I want us to be creative in getting money. I want to build relationships with the mayor's office so we can look at the pilot funds again. I'm sorry, I do. I want to write some more grants. There's got to be grant money out there that we're not tapping into. I want to build relationships with UVM and Champlain and other educational institutions in the city to see how they can help us and support us. This is a citywide thing that we have here. Education is not in a bubble. We don't exist separate from everybody else. Where is the swing space that we need? Why isn't someone stepping up in the city and saying, I'm going to give you some swing space? Come on, you need it. We, this work has to get done. Let's work together. I feel really passionately about this, obviously. I agree, education is changing, absolutely. No amount of differentiation can fix everything. Other countries do education very differently because they figured out, there's only so much differentiating you can do in a classroom. If a kid is endangering other students in the classroom, it's hard with one adult in there to, to fix that, as an example. Another reason why I love the idea of expanding sports and clubs and having more support there, especially at the high school level, on the playing field, in the clubs after school is when our kids get together. It's when they really interact with each other. Classrooms are, to a certain extent, you know, they are separate and students do get separated and some kids get tracked and so forth. But in sports and in clubs, we can interact, all our kids can interact together and have meaningful experiences together. That's where so much of our learning gets done. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Gulick. Commissioner Carey.
Okay, well, I'll just be brief and positive, okay? I'm really happy to see that there are so many overlaps, because we were operating blindly in terms of what was going on in the central office and what we were trying to do to get a head start on this budgetary process. And that, that's really all that we were trying to do. And I apologize to anyone who felt left out or insulted by the, the fact that we had gotten together and done some work on this. But I personally was, was frustrated because I didn't know exactly what the process was, or I didn't sense that we were making any progress in the last couple of meetings. So that's was kind of the impetus of getting together casually. It was supposed to be a two-hour meeting. I told you, it went on till 4:30 in the afternoon. The sun set before the meeting was over. And, but anyway, but anyway, and I'll echo what Monica said, because it, it's been great to go through this process and to get a handle on the difficult decisions that need to be made. And to see this document here and then compare it to the other. I hate to think of where we might be as a board today if we only had what was presented here on the slides. I think that would be a big mistake. So there has to be something going on on the outside. And we felt the need that it, that it had to get done, so we did it. And I'm happy. I learned a lot. But anyway, I also want to talk about, just very briefly about the change. You know, schools are very different. We're going to build a, a high school that is going to allow for a lot of different strategies and a lot of different presentations, a lot of different proficiencies being demonstrated as kids go through their educational career here. But you know what? The species has not changed. We are mammals. We all have mothers. We all want to be loved. And that is really true among the little kids who come to our school as kindergartners. Everyone wants to be loved regardless of how difficult they are. And we know there are lots of difficulties. Everyone wants to be challenged and successful. Everyone wants to learn. We are programmed to learn. And this, it's very important. We put aside sometimes the importance of the institution for challenging and allowing kids to learn every single day. And that needs to be, I think, an emphasis on where we go in the future. But right now, we need to make sure that they are safe and challenged and, and learning every single day. And we can do that, I think, best by putting people in the classroom to manage the very difficult, but potentially the greatest student population in the state. I mean, there's no doubt in my mind that we have this huge percentage of needs when kids come into our system. But we also have the most unbelievable potential that doesn't exist anywhere else. It has to do with our diversity and our fabulous cultural richness here in Burlington that we can continue to, to celebrate. What else did I want to say?
Anywhere else in Vermont.
Where else in Vermont? That's true. That's true. We're prepare, we're trying to prepare world citizens and they leave the state and find that the rest of the United States is more like Burlington than it is like anyplace else in the state.
Thank you, Commissioner Carey.
Am I done? Okay. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Curry, sorry, skipped over you.
Oh, that's all right. I had my five and three mixed up, so I'm still mentally confused. So I'm going to, I wrote this and we're going to read really fast. I agree that we need a clearer strategic framework to guide our thinking. We seem to have general agreement that we need to invest in the elementary schools and in instructional investments. I also agree we need a different solution when things like SA drops in enrollment and ends up with multi-grades without enough teachers. And I'm glad to see the district proposal investments in the three full-time special ed teachers. The board could specifically direct these to the elementary schools to include maybe SA and Flynn, if that's where the needs show up, recalling that these needs were determined after the school year started based on who showed up. And also they had the multi-year classroom blend. In terms of coaching versus interventionists, nearly all of our broader discussions to date beyond the breakout and small group discussions have focused on learning about the embedded coaching model as a best practice. The comments that only a small group of teachers like the model are, to me, in contrast to it's an even smaller group of teachers that don't like it. The ones at SA saw improvements from interventionists, but those interventionists were implemented differently at SA. They've been there much longer. SA also has other unique characteristics that could be contributed factors to the better achievement outcomes. We've not seen those achievement outcomes at any other elementary school that we've seen at SA. So why wouldn't we implement a best practices model that's widely acclaimed in the best education journals and heavily used in some of the nation's best school districts with the best, the new embedded coaching models, not the old ones. Teaching, planning time and mentoring were mentioned as sufficing instead of coaching, but these have very different goals than a formal professional feedback that is personalized immediately based on the teacher's professional development goals. And then there was the request from one of the coaches that we have professional development followed by tier-two teaching as a comprehensive systematic approach. There was an implication that there aren't enough behavioral coaches because they are shared between schools and are, but they are supplemented by restorative practices framework. If we add special ed teachers with behavioral management experience, then the three of those investments together will significantly, I think what Laura was saying, prevent special ed costs later. I would propose a control group that we keep the intervention, interventionists at SA and return the magnet coaches to them and then give everyone else the embedded coaching model. And we do a three to five year comparison and see what happens. The communications director has been instrumental with a lot of things, as we all know. It was created when, over the past three years, our district was challenged and we really needed to communicate with, we were hounded by requests for communication. Also, the ideas for building relationships with grant funding and external partners, the city meetings, meetings with the state, all of that takes a lot of communication strategy and deployment. So I think that position could grow and become more strategic. I think our high school resources are generally higher overall than middle and elementary schools. And I'd like to see the data on that, on the per pupil spending broken out by elementary, middle and high school levels. I think we should look at those per pupil allocations by grade level and consider other resources like Boosters Club, which has been incredibly generous, received incredibly generous donations and could be funding, I think, things like the athletic requests. We could also be asking for sponsors. The middle schools are chronically underfunded with athletic scheduling, coordination of resources. And I prefer, if we made athletic investments, they go there. I agree about the city pilot funds, that's a source. Given the amount of administration requirements that this board has placed on central office, I can't agree. And also the audits, draft management letter, I'd like to speak with the audit about the administrative budget and configuration. I can't agree with any budget that cuts admin. Our admin is 1.1% of our instructional funding. South Burlington is 1.8%. Okay. Lastly, I'd like to see us respect the process in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Curry. Ready yourselves. Last but probably least, and I hate to harsh the collective mellow here to delve back into particulars, but is bowling a sport?
Yes, it's a-
It's a game.
And that's, that's ultimate frisbee, not frisbee golf, right?
Right, ultimate.
Golf is also not.
He is the state champ.
It's not a sport.
And it's a co-ed team.
From, I do want to maybe just agree on the record with Jeannie about the idea that an abrupt philosophical transition, I don't think is a good idea at this time. And I think that we are going to have to acknowledge that there are these two, not mutually exclusive, but competitive as far as resources go approaches to dealing with what is a persistent problem in the school district. And I think we'll all do well to, I mean, it would be great if we could come up with a collective philosophy, some way to integrate the two in a way that worked. And maybe it's not the same at every school, but we could all be on the same page that way. And I think that, you know, just to, to give us some information, we could work with it at some point, and not now, but at some point, a district-wide survey of the teachers and their- their attitudes towards it might be edifying for us, just to give us a feel, because we seem to have conflicting ideas about what's more popular and what's more productive. And just having a more educated position on that, I think, would, would do us all well. But, you know, bottom line, when I look at these two documents, you know, I think the district proposal is a really even nice compromise between this one that our ad hoc group put together and, and the status quo. I mean, you've got nine kindergarten pairs instead of 16. You've got half as many, but you do, you do have middle school guidance, middle school guidance counselor, health teacher, keeping the bus, and the, the high school stuff, the proficiency coach, et cetera. I mean, I, I think in a lot of ways, we're, you're on the same page, and I, I think that, you know, we need to dot an i or two and, and cross a t or two, and maybe you guys could go back and look at these and say, yeah, maybe bowling is a sport. And, et cetera, et cetera. You know, we could, but I, I just don't, you know, there isn't time to do anything really drastic here, and that includes putting together large data sets that we could use to really, like, drive this decision on a more granular level. But those are things that might be nice over the course of the next year or two years for us to be able to put together so that we are, you know, more, more well-grounded, at least in, you know, like, like Mike says, in, in the data. I'm done.
Thank you, Commissioner Gorman. Superintendent Novak.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna sort of use my opportunity to talk a bit more about process. One of the things I would say that we do have the best complexity in the state in terms of challenges. And I was at a superintendent's meeting this morning, and we, one of the topics was around budget. And I would like to inform you that you're not that different from other districts. Most of the challenges that we're talking about, we were talking about this morning, and there wasn't a single district that said, we got it, we've got enough, we're not adding anything to the budget, or I wish I could add more. Everyone wants to add more, and that's, that's a continuous challenge. And that's a challenge that you have to deal with as a board in terms of balancing that. So I really do like the, both like the multi-year approach and thinking, okay, this is where we want to go. And I think we've tried to kind of model that a little bit, but I think we need more engagement, I guess, in terms of what the, what the board's priorities are around that in terms of how to do it. And also really clarifying, you know, I know in my experience, boards, not just school boards, usually define the what, right? This is what we want to do. And in staff, we do the how. And you leave us alone most of the time. There are, sometimes it bleeds over, and in education, it becomes complicated because everyone's passionate about it. So even the how, you go, oh, well, I think the how. And so I think there's some conversations around that in terms of how do we define that, and how does the board give us some clear direction around the what so we can bring the how? And we've tried to do that in this process in terms of listen to what you've said around here and bring back this recommendation within the restraints that you've given us. One was around the dollars amounts and what you've said. So I'm hoping that that was some information that you can, you can, you can use as, as we move forward. The, someone made a comment about the early and the high school. Yes, about two years ago, we did the analysis. We spent more dollars on the high school than the early, than the early years, and that's why the principals came up with the early learning as a priority. We need to kind of really spend time around some of that, so I wanted to kind of reinforce that. The other thing I would say is that the central office struggles, and it has struggled because, one, we're the number-one target. I haven't been to a district anywhere that they haven't said, cut at the palace first, or what are you doing? And people don't often know what we're, we're doing. I could spend all my time trying to explain all the different roles and all the different jobs. I don't think the board wants me to spend my time doing that. There are all kinds of people who do wonderful things that you don't, you're not even aware of, that, you know, I wouldn't want to spend my time trying to do that. But, so, there is a balance there in terms of building enough understanding so you can trust that, yes, we're doing what we can, and then we're trying to support the system. We also get the duality, and Mark and Liz were here, when we, we got a lot of push from, in the past years, even up to the last years, around, we want this from central office. What if it's communication? Or, and we just didn't have the, the resources to do that. So people keep asking for more from us, and they, and, but we don't have some people to respond to it, right? So that's a challenge that, I've shared that with people in the past, if no one really cares, around that. But I wanted to kind of say that because I do want to give some support to our staff who come in every day and on those snow days and all the other days that do some really good work, that never get the kudos around that. So I want to kind of recognize the impact that they have on the district. Lastly, I would say that hopefully we can talk about process around the next, around the next steps, because I think we've got enough between the conversations we've had here to move forward. And it can be either director from the board saying, go and do this, or it could be some recommendations, say, go away, superintendent with your staff, and come back with this. We purposely stopped at the 4% and didn't add the little things like the bowling and the pieces because that's where we thought that's such conversation for the board to say, because those items were not part of the priorities. They didn't fit there. So if you want to do that, we will leave that up to the board to say, okay, it's not in the priority area, but we feel it's worthwhile, and we're willing to, and that, I believe it's your role to do that. And I sincerely, and I know Nate wants to, we need to be an extension of the board. Like, we really need to be an extension of the boards. The board needs to kind of get together, and we can deliver the work that you want to see us do. And that's where we're going to find success for our district, and then the vision will be aligned, right? We're not there yet, and I think it, it takes time. There's some growing pains that have to happen, and everyone has to sort of understand their roles. And I'm also learning as well, too. We got nine new people in the last, you know, little bit, understanding where people are coming from and what your needs are, and how to better give information. You know, people make comments about, we need this, we need this. Previous boards, other board members didn't need that, right? That kind of thing. I once had a board chair who was an amazing board chair, but I don't think she's ever been in a school besides her kids, her children's school, right? But she's, but she was amazing, and you have others who had a different approach. So there's different ways. And so that leads me to my final conclusion in terms of education is changing, and there's more than one way to, to find success, right? In terms of our strategies and things we do. But I do think that one of the things we do need to do is to define something we're going to do, stay the course, measure it, and then figure out if it's working, if it's not working, then we change. Why would we continue? If it is working, then we'll replicate it and do so. Those are my two cents. Three minutes?
Okay.
Thank you.
Executive session.
So.
What are we gonna do?
Did you have a question you wanted answered?
Yeah, I want to ask a question.
No, I know.
We presented the 4% the board had given us, that kind of direction. So right now, we're saying, okay, this is it. So we need some direction to say either, yeah, that's it, you're good enough, or we're okay to go to 4.5, and please consider some of these other things that we've talked about to include into the budget. That kind of thing, right?
When can we do that? When does that happen?
So the feedback you're looking for tonight, and then we could, we've asked commissioners to hold Thursday, January 17th from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. You received the invitation.
So, for instance, we've heard around the table, people have advocated for some other item, and I would say, I would use, I would use this as my reference point, right? So the things that got the most dots were the things we looked at to hear. We couldn't honor everything to full extent, but there are some other items on there that people have spoken to tonight that weren't on our, on our list. So if the board feels comfortable going beyond that 4% that we've got and thinks that, hey, there are some items here that we should consider, then the board could choose to give us direction to go back and include some of those pieces, or.
Fisher?
But the board has also, besides additions, has also asked for, has also suggested some reductions. So at least for me, I'm not comfortable going up, going up, going up without talking about doing some cuts. So I think that's two parts of the same conversation.
Commissioner Carey.
I don't think I heard that you just said you're not willing to change your proposal. Is that right?
No, I'm saying, we've done a proposal, we're just looking for direction from the board, what we should do with it.
And this is what was discussed today, was direction from the board. So there needs to be another proposal, correct?
This proposal was based on the DOT exercise we did. We all did this together. So that's the proposal we got from the administration. This was our.
But I'm talking about what's next. What's next? So we have all this information tonight, we have this proposal, we have two proposals, right? So there's going to be another one.
So what, that's what I'm asking for.
Yes, that's what he's asking.
That's what I'm asking for. We did our proposal today based on this exercise board, right? And then you brought forward another piece. So I'm saying, okay, what do you want us to do with it? What do you want us to do?
Right. Okay. So we'll just kind of give the comment to that. Commissioner Walz.
Ideally, and this might be too much to ask, and I apologize ahead of time, but it would be great to see within the 4%, three different versions of a budget. I know, it's a lot. What if, but I'm saying, like, we do know that we don't want all of the coaches to go away. How many can we afford and still have bowling? That's my, I mean, it's kind of like playing Tetris.
Yes.
This is what I do with my own budget at home. Obviously, I don't have a lot to work with, so it doesn't take me long, but.
Commissioner, so student rep gentleman, you had your hand up.
Oh, I was just gonna say, like, adding on to what Commissioner Fisher was saying, just the, with being mindful of that, on kind of, that there are two sides to that issue, again, just like the potential ramifications of whatever we decide in the future, because I feel like that one year is kind of blinding, like, thinking about long-term goals.
Commissioner Wick, and then Curry.
Yeah. Do you want to go first, Liz?
Sure, thank you. Number one, we seem to have a fundamental disagreement about whether to stick with the coaching model or go back to interventionists, and that's a huge cost choice. So I think it would be helpful if we all weighed in through some process about that. Number two, last year, Jeff, you created this dynamic budget modeling tool, which allows everybody to take the line item you want and plug it in. And so why don't we all do that and send it to Nate and be really annoying that he'll have what everybody wants? And he can do a comparison, or somebody can do a comparison. That's just a suggestion.
Effectively, that would spit out, this is going to pass. Right?
It would sound like it would spit out.
Well, it's an Excel spreadsheet.
Twelve different budgets.
But you'll find the common elements.
If you only got two choices here, I mean, or, you know, some.
You're talking specifically about the coaching model.
Or just.
Just all these. Yeah. I mean, maybe that's not the way to go, but I just think we have a fundamental, you know, direct, direction. We either stick with the old or we go with the new, versus coaching versus interventionists, because it doesn't seem to be a consensus.
Let's read the notes that came from last night's meeting about coaching. That could inform us and help us come up with some decisions.
And what about, sorry, what about if, within the federal funding and the number of coaches, if, are, are the federal-funded coaches reliant on X amount of contribution from the district to hire coaches?
Yeah, I guess the initial application has a sustainability, sustainability factor in terms of, we're going to be able to deliver this if you give us this, and we're going to pay for this. I think that we do have to, we do have to reconcile this coaching thing, because I think that's the barrier to finishing this process, whether that's in or not. We've never brought that in as part of the budget process as we're going to cut coaches. So if we're going to cut coaches, that means we're changing one of our strategies in terms of around achievement. So if the board is asking us to do that, then the board needs to be clear, that's what I'm, the board needs to just say, no more coaches, and go with that, or keep it status quo, but we still want to have these other pieces. Because we did the, we did the heavy lifting. We went back, we filed $500,000 to say, okay, here's some more so we can support the things that we, we've done there without sort of harming the classroom. So I think we're at the state that I, that I would need some direction from the board. I mean, I think it's unfair for us to go back and do a whole bunch of work and come back and have, you need to be clear and say, okay, you know, we're going to stick with the coaching model, we're not going to stick with the coaching model, we want, we want you to add another $200,000 based on these things and make it work and bring back, and then we'll deliberate around. Otherwise, I think we'll be back to doing the same thing, like, just, okay, what should we do? And people are going to be arguing both sides, but I think the board has to reconcile that issue so we can kind of move on.
Commissioner Wick.
Maybe there is the threshold question tonight that we attempt to take a straw vote on about the coaches. I do believe, I know we took, you guys took the numbers off of the reductions, but after the federal funding, the group asked to remove six instructional coaches. After the federal funding, it's my understanding that that line item only costs the district about $240,000. So what that means is just to, unless someone can give me better information, by eliminating those six coaches, we're, we're only saving 240. And, and I sense that there's a, a slight majority here who's willing to keep the coaches, but also wants to reexamine some more direct instruction intervention additions. I don't see it as even, either/or on that. And I was comfortable, and maybe the others aren't, but I don't think you're going to get the final, enough unanimity among us. But I think you've just heard several hours of input, which I think either subconsciously or consciously you could sleep on, and then come up with something that you, I think you've got a fair amount of direction.
I, I think in terms of what's represented, I think we've got some feedback around what people are saying they want to support. What I don't have is around, which we didn't bring forward as, as a piece, is around eliminating the coach, because it's not just, okay, I think the, the approach was eliminate the coaches to find dollars to do other things, right? To support instruction, okay? If that was not an issue, would we be having that conversation? Right? So I think those are the questions that I would hope the board would be having the conversation and deliberating over, right? In terms of deciding where we want to, because that would mean, if we were to say, for instance, if the scenario was, okay, we decided that, okay, we don't want to do the coaching model anymore, right? And so go back and eliminate the coaches. Then there's a chain effect, right? In terms of all kinds of things, also financial, and, and we would do it if that's what the board desired, right?
What if we broke down the budget you presented today, either, either line by line or, or, you know, under the different little, like, you know, headings that you had, and just voted on them individually? And then people could add to that the bowling team, the such-and-such? And we could vote on those individually.
I don't think that's an issue. I don't think those, adding the other items, the issue is, do we get rid of the coaches to find the dollars?
That would be part of it. Like, we go, we go line by line through the, the budget you guys gave us today, and I'll just put it out here right now, I'm fine with all of it. After that, we say, we throw up for a vote, do we cut coaches? We throw up, do we add interventionists? And then we vote on those specifically if people want, as a group, to vote for them.
I would suggest we prioritize it if we're going to go through that level. In other words, I think the threshold question is the coaches. And, and I hope I'm not speaking out of turn here, but if we took sort of a, if, if anyone's willing to take a straw completely non-binding on what the general gist is, do you generally support keeping the coaches in, or do you generally support pulling them out? And if we could just see if it's seven, you know, sorry, eight-four, and someone.
Did I hear Liz say compromise, something about combination? I mean, we haven't talked about compromising.
I agree. That's what I was talking about.
In those, both of those, there were, there were ways there, I mean, whether it's 16 or nine.
Pairs.
We all committed to putting pairs into kindergarten. You know, we, some schools may need an interventionist more than they need a coach right now. I mean, I think that's the kind of conversation we have, but we don't take it at 11:30 or whatever it is. We do it at, we do it at 6:00 on, and where we're fresh. That's what I would say we do. Because I see a lot of areas where there's commonality, and there's a lot of ways we can, because we, you know, we, I don't, you know, I, I think we're all aware that we don't want a budget that is too high, but we want to make sure that we, we have our own kind of direct instruction kind of thing, and we're just been talking about. And some of us will get some of those things, some of us won't, you know, but that's, that's what community engagement is, is speaking up for what you want, and then, then taking a vote.
Commissioner Carey.
Just to clarify, the proposal that we saw earlier is not a coaches-in, coaches-out
but that's, that's what community engagement is, is speaking up for what you want, and then, and then taking a vote.
Commissioner Kerry?
Just to clarify, the proposal that we saw earlier is not a coaches-in, coaches-out strategy. There are many coaches that remain in the system in that, it's just a reduction in the numbers.
Commissioner, did gentleman, did you want...
Oh, no, no, I was just saying that that third option seems important there.
Commissioner Vang?
I agree with the, the compromising, like Commissioner Kerry suggested. Well, maybe at SA, we have two interventionists, and at Flynn. Wherever that model worked really well, and everywhere else, and I've, the, the only coaches I've heard positive input for were, like, the embedded instructional coaches. I've not gotten any feedback on the behavioral coaches. So, can we cut the behavioral coaches before we get too deep into that? And keep the, you know, so, some kind of compromise.
Anyone else before Mr. Commissioner Wick speaks? Commissioner Wick?
I, I, unless the super's not comfortable with this, I, I feel somewhat strongly that, I think he's, there'll be some things that he knows, a lot, a lot of things that he knows better than we do, but, but that, based on what you've heard, I think you're qualified, if you're willing, to take it and come back with us, come back to us next meeting with a new starting point. It's not set in stone by any means, but then when we're fresh, we can then have this discussion that we're all, but I think you've heard, but if you're not comfortable with that, if you, if you say, I must have more direction on X, Y, or Z tonight, I think we can give you that. But I think going line by line, I mean, I'm wiped out. I'm, I'm, I don't think it's gonna be beneficial.
Because of other committee meetings, we also, we, we weren't planning to meet until Thursday the 17th. We can reach out to everyone tomorrow to see what their availability is, and based on the time Superintendent Obang and Director Lively needs, when we could meet again. We meet on Thursday the 10th, just for 45 minutes to, for the TA agreement.
So, so we're all here, right? We all have...
We all stay.
No, we're saying we're here right now.
Stay until we're done.
No, next Thursday, this coming Thursday.
So, so the question is...
Pre-K task force.
So the question is, if we wait to do the next discussion, the budget discussion on the 17th, is that waiting too long?
It might be, can we meet sooner?
Monday.
Can we meet Monday the 14th, or Tuesday the 15th?
Tuesday the 15th is Dee and I.
Saturday morning for eight hours.
My house, my house, I'll have coffee, donut.
Till the sun sets.
Monday the 14th, Monday the 14th.
Monday the 14th.
Is, is the suggestion.
What's the deadline?
The twenty-something.
The 23rd, 22nd, something like that.
Yes, Monday the 14th.
Did you guys find out at council meeting last night what the deadline is?
I'm just about to ask Nathan. Nathan, what is the deadline for?
For the ballot?
Yeah, for the budget.
I'll look that up, I have it.
Commissioner Barlow? Commissioner Barlow, did you...
I just, I just have a question, because I didn't hear...
Superintendent answered, do you need more direction from us tonight, Stone?
I would love some more direction.
I said, do you, I mean, one of the ideas that was floated was this straw poll around support for coaching. Is that useful to you?
Yeah, and the only thing, I, I appreciate Commissioner Wick's confidence, but, you know, I don't know if, I don't know what, like, we could go away and come back, but I don't know if it's gonna hit the mark, because we don't have enough.
How about have three options, like Jeannie suggested?
They're not gonna be drastically different.
We could do a quick poll, keep the coaching model the way it is, get rid of it, and have the middle ground, which is less coaches than today. Just as a quick straw poll, would that get you what you need?
That would give me...
Okay.
Good idea.
Can I say one thing before we do?
Sure.
Keep in mind that cutting coaches, you're, you're cutting some, forgive me, Keith, but some highly subsidized positions, a lot of bang for the buck. So when you just, compromise always sounds good to everybody, but be careful, we're getting a lot of leverage right now, and I don't, I know you can't count on federal funds, but we're gonna remain a Title I school system for a while, so we're gonna get this federal... These coaches are a lot of leverage.
So then, so then why, why in reductions, and, and you could speak to Commissioner Kerry's, you know, originally the document that doesn't have the numbers on it, there was a number floated by that, you know, like, do we, you know, I guess, if Commissioner Wick is correct in saying the coaching model as it exists today costs us, based on Nate's document, I mean, everybody has, has everybody seen that document? So what, what the, the total sum is? I'm trying to make sense of what Commissioner Wick is saying, for what we get, you're...
He's just saying, because those positions are, if you look at that document, approximately half of the funding comes from those federal grants.
Right, so 740,000.
Right, so I, I think that's all he's saying, is that, like, we're, you know, we're implementing that model with that many positions at a cost to our local taxpayers, that's about half of the total cost.
Right.
It's also a logistical challenge too, right? Because some of their half positions, so you're not getting rid of half of a person in terms of funding, and so, it'll have, it'll have a ripple effect in terms of riffs and all those other pieces, but we, I mean, we'll deal with it if that's what we want. The other piece is that, the proposal for SA that Stephanie puts forward is companion with the coaches, in terms of the things we're gonna deliver. So she gets funds for the operational stuff too, based on...
So is everybody hearing this?
So that would have to, we'd have to repackage that, and hopefully get those same level of funding, but we're not, we don't know. We know that the, that the feds see coaching as, as a priority, as something that they will support, if districts come forward with that, with other things, they'll support. So, we may not get the same level of resources with that approach.
So Commissioner Barlow, and then Kerry?
Just to clarify, another clarified question, so if we did a straw poll, and we kept, if, if we were to keep the coaching model the way you presented it, would there be opportunities to address some of the needs for interventionists through reductions elsewhere, potentially?
We could certainly look at that, for sure.
I'm just, I'm just asking, because, like, we've said, it's not an either/or, we've talked about compromise, but it sounds like to, to try to disassemble the coaching model may be challenging, just because of the way...
Yeah, it's just logistically challenging, and, you know, and I think we, if, if we talk to our principals, they would say, yeah, interventionists, yes, they would love, if, if I'd say, if I offered an interventionist to any principal, they'd say, we'll take it in a minute, right? It supports students, and they'd be able to have that piece. One of the reasons why the shift in, because we've got such a large cohort of students that need that intervention, and the research shows us, once you've got over 20%, then your challenge is not interventions, it's your tier-one instruction. So we have to address that, so we have less students, and then we can apply the, we still need interventions regardless, and then we can apply the interventions. But, so if I were to, if I were to say to a principal, would you like to have an interventionist? They would say, yes, for sure. They would, they would, they would welcome that opportunity, right? And that's why I was saying, if we were to, if you were to add onto the mod, if we were to say, oh, we're gonna add interventionists, status quo, add interventionists, people would be like, woo-hoo, yee-hee-yee. But if you're saying you're gonna take away, then people are gonna say, well, you know, you're taking that away, but you're giving, you know, right? So, that's the challenge.
So it's a couple, Commissioner Kerry, you had your hand up then?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to say that the commission, the coaches that we're talking about cutting are the embedded elementary-level ones, and we looked at the funding, and the ones that are outside-funded are not being cut. So we, we looked at that, those numbers that Nate gave us yesterday, and the proposal represents a portion of the coaches, I think I'm right on this, a portion of the coaches who, the, who the district pays for. The other ones that are still there, there's many that are still there, including the magnet coaches, the head coach, another coach, the, the, I think it's the PLP coach or something, there are still several there, that's why I'm, I'm opposed to like a either/or vote, because it's, people don't understand the complexity of it, I don't think. The three possibilities that Mike suggested make sense, you know, but when, I think you need to look more carefully at it. Last night, we had a two-hour meeting about coaches. There's a, there's a transcript that you need to look at, I think, to make an informed, a fully informed decision about, about those changes, and what the coaches said about their own positions, what the teachers said, what was said around the room last night. I'll get that to you as early as tomorrow.
Commissioner Gulick?
I was just gonna offer one last thing, and then I need to go, actually. But, how about, as a compromise, we, we go forward with the coaching model this year with the understanding that we will be looking at data next year, and we will be looking for improvements in our proficiency scores, because they make the claim that they can improve those scores. Next year, we better see some growth with our, with our data and our scores. Also, it gives us a year to do some more research, maybe poll the teachers, do a survey, blah, blah, blah. It gives us a little bit of wiggle room.
Commissioner...
We did hear last night, and it'll be in the notes, that you won't see data next year that reflects a change, because Terry's point was, there's a comprehensive package of strategic investments.
When will we see the improvement?
What they said was...
Three years from now.
What they said was, there's a comprehensive package, you'll see it in the notes, that anchored in tier one, then they wanted professional development, that was the next priority. Then they said interventionists. But I agree that we, we, I like the idea of starting with the coaching model, give SA what they want, let them have it, it's driving me crazy, they can't, they're never happy with anything. And then, and then, well, it's, it's really hard to, to have one school that does succeed, but the rest of the district doesn't succeed, and we don't know why they're succeeding, and it's great they're succeeding, and I don't wanna dismantle it either, but...
We already did.
But we need it at a level playing field, and it's really hard to talk with them about that. So I kinda feel like, let them be the control group, let's do the experiment.
Well, wait a minute, this is again the second question.
And then they, so interventionists next year would be a goal to build back, and have it be a strategic three-year plan, and I think we will be getting data the whole way.
But what she did say was, that they have this group that did the Nellie May grant, that, that did the data on it, that they are doing a questionnaire to teachers next year about the coaching model.
Right, they're doing that now, yep, yep.
So you would have that data.
And plus, they have multi-age classrooms, which is not good, it's screwing them up. And I think we need to get rid of those.
Superintendent Vang? Thank you. This is, this, we should have this conversation, right? This is a good one, right? Thanks for your comments, and I build on that, and it sounds like the board is wanting some validation, right? But it needs some time. I know that the coaches are doing some communications with teachers, and principals are also, they're being held accountable in terms of, so I think it is possible to get some feedback, may not be the hard empirical data for every kid, but it is some feedback in terms of an effective treatment from our teachers, in terms of, hey, how is this going so far? And then look to, to move, to move forward. If I were king of the world, I would probably be looking at, how do we provide the professional supports for our teachers, and at the same time, provide interventions to those students who need it, right? And that's where I would be going, and that's the kind of direction I would be hoping to get from a board to say, this is what we wanna see, and then we'd say, okay, we come up with a plan to see how we can expand intervention strategy around targeting those, those students who need help right now. At the same time, supporting our, our, our teachers to build that capacity, so hopefully it's like a sandwich approach, right? To get there. When Stephanie made the shift, she had to work with what she had at the time, and the resources she could get from the feds, and working with the state, and said, okay, if I can do this, I can do this, I can get this, I can get five more positions, and do that, and do it like this. If she was given an opportunity and said, hey, guess what, you don't have to worry about that, she would've had a different approach, for sure, right? So we're working with limitations, right? In terms of what's available.
I think that's a great explanation, because I do think, you know, the, the message and the narrative that went out was, coaches or interventionists throughout the whole city and the district, and I think, you know, to get that explanation, even now, is not too late, so that we can build upon it, yeah.
Why don't we do the straw vote, plan to meet next Thursday, and if you change your vote in the meantime, based on something you've come across, let the group know.
Is there, is there any opposition to potentially holding Monday the 14th as well? I know we're asking you for your... So Monday the 14th, we could have a board meeting?
I might not be able to make it, but I could just let you know my vote, vote where I am.
Okay, thanks, yeah, so Monday the 14th, every, could I have a show of hands, how many people could make Monday the 14th? Oh, great, so we have a majority.
Half, four, six, please.
Sorry, all right.
Can I just suggest that if there's another proposal, if there's another presentation or something, that it be, that we get it in advance if possible, and maybe in a more digestible format? I find slide-by-slide to be very confusing, myself, and if it's on one page, it's really clear. Something to think about in advance would be really helpful for me, okay?
And I didn't ask, I didn't ask Superintendent Obang, does Monday the 14th and Director Lively?
I could have my hair done that day, but I'll see if I can get that switched around.
I'll bring my buzzer.
Both of us at the same time.
So, what are we doing now?
So now...
So wait, so are we done, are we done with the budget discussion?
We're gonna do a straw...
We're not giving you direction.
No, we aren't.
We're gonna give him a straw poll of what you suggested.
We are gonna do the straw poll. Let's do it. And then we will meet on the 14th to hear an updated proposal based on that straw poll and what you've heard tonight.
Great.
One other quick question, the other thing that I think you asked, a little guidance, is anybody willing, if it means getting a little bit more of what you want, to tick up a tenth or two? So from four to 4.1 to 4.2?
Percentage increase.
Oh, ticked up.
You know, I'm sorry, I wasn't clear. Like, is there any wiggle room, or is four, I don't think, I personally don't think four should be our hard stop. A year ago, we ended up approving a budget that we thought was gonna result in an 8% tax increase, it resulted in a 3.32. I'm not saying that I'm hopeful again, but my point is... It was 7.99.
That's the impact of the CLA.
Anyway, my point is, is there any flexibility, I think is what you also wanted to know?
Yeah.
Is there? Or should we straw poll that, too?
I think you should straw poll it.
Let's straw poll it, okay.
Okay.
Should we start with the first?
Go ahead, start.
So, you want me to do it?
Sure.
Okay.
What's the question?
So the first question is...
Let me hear all three first.
Yeah, 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 just, I'm writing it, figuring it out, patients cross up off. All right, so first is around coaching model.
I'll do the increase first.
Increase first.
Okay, so, do you support either 4% or a slight increase?
Would you potentially consider a slight increase?
Would you consider?
Why don't you run this then?
All right. Would you potentially consider, the question is, are you at a hard four? Or would you potentially tick a little higher to one, one or two tenths? You know, you have some flexibility. Will you take...
Yep, I got it, I'm right here.
Mike, are you...
Hard four.
Hard four, okay. Claire?
A little above four, a tenth.
I would have some flexibility above four.
Flex.
Can I be last?
No!
Sure.
Why not?
Can't we just do a show of hands here?
Well, no, no, let's just make sure we're not...
Drag it out as long as possible.
Monica?
More point two.
All right, so you're of a little flexibility.
The same.
Little flexibility.
Slight flexibility, yeah.
Yeah, slight.
I don't believe in this type of thing, I think we should talk about what our program is, rather than the, the amount. I don't believe in form, preparing a budget based on percentage increase, I wanna know what the programs are, that...
We agree, Commissioner Pillsbury, and you don't have to vote if you don't want, but I think it's fair to ask whether people are flexible, because that then informs the ability to possibly execute on some programs.
We'll talk about it on the...
But he's asking, Superintendent.
Okay, then, you're up, Martine. You're a no, or a yes, or neither?
I just, I don't wanna bargain on numbers, I wanna, I want money, I wanna bargain on programs.
Hard four.
I think we were at 3.9, so I think we'll go with four.
So you're a hard four. So it sounds like if we...
Wait, Martine, now, back to Martine. Are you looking at Isaac for cheat, don't cheating?
I'm gonna go with hard four.
All right, so it sounds like the slight maj, what are the numbers, Mike? I thought slight majority is, is flexible.
I didn't get Kerry's.
Slight minority is hard four.
Stephen Kerry.
So, sorry, Stephen Kerry, you said slight flexibility?
Yes, he did.
Kerry, and, and...
That is what he said. Kathy?
Kathy?
I did say that. Do I think that now? But I, I'll stick, I'll stay with it.
Okay.
Yeah. So one, two, three, four, four hard fours, and six, uh.
Missing someone.
Who are we missing?
Eric.
I said, I'm, I'm slight.
All right. So seven, seven little flexibility, one abstention, and four hard fours.
Okay. Next question.
Thank you.
Coaches.
Coaches. So the question is, would you support, question one is, would you support keeping the coaching model as, as presented, without reductions? You want to start?
Wait, wait.
Is that not the question?
Now I can run this one, all right.
All right, you run this one.
You run, it's not binding.
The question is, do you support keeping the coaching model as is? Do you support getting rid of the coaching model? Do you support a compromise?
I could vote for two of those.
Make a decision, pick one.
No, 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 that's what I'm saying.
It's a guiding.
The way it is.
The way it is, get rid of it, or a compromise. I'm not saying which compromise, a compromise. You're saying you, let's start with you, Jeanne, because it's interesting what you're saying.
I don't think it's compromising, but I'm not opposed to keeping the same model.
Pick one.
Why do I have to pick one?
Because we have to make decisions.
That's good guidance.
Okay, I pick, I pick compromising.
Okay. Isaac?
I don't think I can vote.
Okay. Stephen?
The three choices are, again.
As is.
Chocolate, vanilla, strawberry.
What's the second one?
Cho, keep it as is.
Get rid of it altogether.
Get rid of it, or some kind of compromise.
The proposal that we saw is a compromise, that's what I go for.
Okay.
Compromise.
Barlow?
As is. I would support a compromise, but not the proposal we saw.
So is that an as-is?
That's a compromise.
No, no, no.
That's a different version of a compromise.
I said a compromise. I didn't say which compromise.
Which one?
Right, all compromise.
I would, I would consider a compromise. I would consider an alternative proposal than the one we saw.
But it's got to be a developed proposal.
Yes.
Yes.
I'm with you, I would consider a, an alternative proposal to the current model.
Same, compromise, alternative program to the current.
Commissioner Wick?
I, I'm leaning stronger towards keeping the, well, are we including the behavioral coaches in this whole, I mean, it's as-is, right? So, all right, I'll just be.
As the document needs.
I think I, I think I like it as-is, but I would, I'm flexible, so potentially, if there's a reasonable compromise, I just like the leverage that it gives us.
So compromise.
So what is that? What is that?
He and I agree.
If, I, I want, I want to keep what we have, and I want a little bit more, but I don't want it to go over four percent.
As-is. Alvin Ailey?
As-is, hold on, do you understand that you're, you're just sending him with a very vague. Thank you.
Like, this is exactly what he asked us not to do.
All right, then I'll be a keep it as-is, just because I don't know what compromise means.
I thought one of the questions was, was off of Martin, one of the options was, status quo, ensure that we do a review a year from now, to think about how we move forward. And I hear from the, from the board that people do like interventionist, so the movement would be towards that direction.
All right, good.
Because of the, because of the ramifications of.
Finish the polling, we're almost done.
All right, Gulick.
Please, just pick one.
All right, as-is.
Thank you.
As-is.
As-is. Compromise, cut some of the coaches.
Okay.
But I'm going back to, I'm going to as-is.
You can start all over again.
I'm sticking with as-is.
Then I'm switching to completely get rid of them. It was great. I hope someone's taping this. This is the direction.
No, 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 no.
You got to start over.
No, no, it's not a problem, it's getting an indication, it's, we're trying to.
Are you, are you really trying to sway, are you really want to get rid of them? Stephen, I'm serious. Or are you just doing it to weigh the vote?
If I had my choice, yes, completely gone. Can we do two-tiered voting?
Oh, wait, now it's okay? Didn't we just do it?
Two options.
Rank voting?
Like, do two options.
We wanted to do the runoff vote in the first place.
Sorry, I'm sorry, I've, we've done the polling, it's just a straw poll, right? Five as-is, one get rid of, and seven, some kind of compromise or amendment. Is that right?
Yep.
Okay. I know it's hard to choose.
Monkey's service.
Imperfect system.
But it's better that we're all doing it together, as twelve or however many there is, then.
That's true representative.
We're thirteen.
Okay.
So can I?
It'd be fourteen, Ms. Mary.
I'm going to paraphrase. Just to wait in.
Don't look at, don't look at me, I said as-is.
Yeah, I know, he said as-is, okay. So first of all, I think I'm hearing from the board. Bonnie, make sure you get this for me. That the board is comfortable with a slight above four percent, if we have to go there.
Yeah.
Okay? I'm also hearing that the board is somewhat comfortable in some sort of compromise of the coaching model.
I would, I would say, because of these numbers, I would say, the board is comfortable with a slight tweak of the current model.
Slight tweak of the current model.
Right? Five as-is, seven, some kind of tweak.
Considering the ramifications of funding that we may not get it, so that's a consideration, the slight tweak. Okay, that's a little better.
Yes.
Can I just say one thing? We don't want to lose any of the free money. Is that, is that in agreement with that?
Absolutely.
Oh, gosh.
Yes.
So vote as-is.
So if I, so, okay.
No, so, so he's just.
So, okay.
Yeah, yeah. It's not easy to come back Monday night.
Wait, wait.
We're not done, we're not done.
We're not leaving.
We're not done.
Yeah, this special thing.
I'm leaving.
Executive.
So, so wait, I'm sorry, before you leave, executive session is not just about the personnel matter.
Right, yes.
It's preparation for Thursday.
Which is to say the teacher contract, but golf you need to, golf you need to.
Okay.
Oh, you get the need.
The maintenance crew's dying to get it.
Pertinent information.
Okay. All right. Okay, so can we handle the TA first, because our attorney's here?
Yeah, in a minute.
All right, so are we moving into executive session?
Yes.
All right, I make a motion to move into executive session for the.
The camera guy's sitting here.
We need to do a motion, move.
We're going to move?
Yes, we're going to move.
Yeah, I don't know. I need to move into executive session to, because there's things that we're going to say that people can't hear.
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move to executive session.
All favor?
All favor, aye.
Opposed?